Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to get started. The video is not going to be shown, just gotta wait a second. Not now. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to get started. What do the teachers do in the classroom when they go like this or something like that? Right? Alright, thank you very much, we appreciate that. We realize we have a lot of people in here and it's reflective of the fact that we have a lot on the agenda today. As always though, we begin these meetings with an act of reverence and the Pledge of Allegiance. And before we have our special guest do the Pledge of Allegiance, he knows who he is, he's back there, he goes to number three school, he'll come up here in a second. I want to have a moment of silence for those folks who suffered tremendous tragedy and loss in the state of Florida. It just seemed like it was almost too much for one family, one person, one state to bear. And so, if I could have your indulgence for a moment of silence, more than a moment of silence, for those folks who have challenges that most of us cannot even imagine. Thank you. Now, there's a young man from number three school. His grandfather is Glennie Williams, who's a guy who's worked in this community for many years. Come on up front, give him a round of applause, he's one of our students. I need you to go to that microphone right over there, see that microphone? Man, he walks with pride, look at him. Let's give him another round of applause. I like his style. He's got swagger, I like that. Now tell everybody your name.
Jada Mabry.
Alright, let's give him another round of applause. Say that with confidence. Watch out Barack. Okay, alright, so listen, he said he was gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so he's gonna ask everybody, tell everybody to stand up. This is the first time you'll be able to tell all these adults what to do.
Please stand up.
That's right, stand up, you heard the man.
Please direct your attention to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic and which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give him a round of applause. As Commissioner Cruz said, thanks John, we, Board of Education, like gave out little parting gifts. And this is a pen, a pencil, that says, "I believe in college, I believe in graduation goals, my family, RSC, Rochester City School District, hard work, my future, determination, peace, learning, respect, me and success." Let's give him another round of applause. Okay. I have to take care of some house cleaning stuff, it's very important that I describe to you the rules of how this meeting is to operate, and I have to do this by ordinance actually. You all need to know that bathrooms are located in the corridor, anytime you have to go to the bathroom, just be respectful and quiet, you can get out to the exit that way. In the unlikely event that there is an emergency and you are required to evacuate, we ask that you use these two exits, see the exit doors are promptly marked. We ask that you do so in a respectful way, in a safe way. There are stairwells, should you have to leave this building on an emergency basis, do not use the elevators. Do not use the elevators. Speakers who have signed up, you know the routine, we ask that you respect the time limit. Madam Clerk, what time limit were they given when they signed up?
Three minutes. Three minutes for, if you've signed up before, we got the 20 speakers after, two minutes, excuse me, and after 20 speakers, there's two minutes.
So they were told?
Three minutes.
Okay.
And then after 20 people, it was two minutes because we have so many speakers.
Alright, so just, she will keep a track of the time, and when you hear that buzzer ring, I'd ask that you sum up your comments. If you keep on going on, I'll have to interrupt your speech, and I don't want to do that. And the reason why I don't want to do that is I want you to finish your thought, if you have something in writing, submit it to the Board of Education, we can accept that, you can give it to the clerk. The other thing that you should understand is when you speak beyond the time period that you're supposed to be speaking, you're interrupting other people's opportunity to speak. It's a long evening and we require that you comply with those time limits, yes.
Glennie Williams is in a wheelchair, he's not gonna be able to get up with the camera in.
Oh, he's not speaking? Mr. Williams, if you, I don't know if you were gonna speak tonight, if you are, please, folks along the side, please allow, are you gonna speak, Mr. Williams?
No.
Okay, we just want to make sure that you have access to the podium. Thank you. Alright, when speaking as always, be respectful, courteous, and limit your comments to the time period that you have been given. So, thank you very much for cooperating there. Next thing we have to do is we have to approve the minutes, I have minutes from May 26th, May 31st, May 31st, June 2nd, and June 9th, it has been moved by Commissioner Cruz and seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Powell, all those in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
And then we have our awards presentation. We have two awards that I'm aware of. We're doing our best, we have been fortunate to have been joined by you all tonight, and we have two awards where, want to make sure that folks are recognized. The first one, I really have the honor to present, and that is to the Joseph C. Wilson Commencement Academy chess team. You know, earlier today, we gave out all these awards for our athletes because we recognize how they came together as a team, how they came together individually, and did well academically. But we have people who exercise their minds in a very powerful way. I've never been a chess person, barely can play checkers, I know how complicated the game of chess is. And so, we have some very special students from Wilson, who were very, very successful, and this month we wanted to give them the Yes We Can Award. They went to a chess tournament in upstate New York, the tournament included teams from a five county area, Genesee, Livingston, Monroe, Steuben, and Wayne Counties. The Wilson chess team bested their opponents in each of the five rounds, competing in the final round against a team from Brighton High School. Our team, that is the Joseph C. Wilson Magnet High School Team, Chess Team, won this championship for three of the last four years, and came in fifth in the statewide tournament earlier this year. Tonight, we recognize the following students, and I hope you're here. Peter Carter, give him a round of applause, Peter, are you here? Alright. Theodore Chapman, Theodore Chapman, come on Theodore, somebody, come on now. Chess team's gotta represent.
Here they are.
Oh, is that, Theodore, are you Theodore? Alright Theodore, let's give Theodore a round of applause. Samuel Sharon, Samuel, come on up Samuel, Samuel. Alright, let's give these brothers a round of applause. Webster Ko, is it Ko or? Webster Keogh? Alright, come on up Webster. Uh, let's see, Sun.
Come here, come here, you be mine. Where's this guy? Use the mic, man, like you know how to do this.
Sanio.
Is that, is that here? Is that, alright, what's that?
Patrick Phillips.
Patrick Phillips. Come on Patrick.
She's a basketball team.
I know, exactly.
Connor Wagner.
Connor Wagner.
Oh my god.
Connor, you act like you're lost, man, this is your moment. Come on Connor. We also want to, let's give these young men a round of applause, boy, they make us look good. They make us very proud. Coach, your coach's name is Thomas Mueller, is he here? Call his name out.
Mueller.
All right. Is a volunteer coach mentor here? Is a volunteer mentor, Mike? Mike Keogh, Mike, Mike are you here? Where are you Mike? Come on Mike. Look at Mike's way back there, come on up Mike, you deserve to be in front. Let's give Mike a round of applause, he's helped these young, way to go Mike. I wonder if I can get the coach to say a few words to the crowd, come on, come on.
Hello everyone, I just wanted to quickly say, this is a remarkable group of students. They're amazing at chess, but most of all, they're just amazing students all around, athletes, strong in academics, and they represent their school really well. But it's a great group of students. So, thanks guys for being a great team, and congratulations.
Alright, we're good to go, thanks a lot guys. You know, sometimes people think of city schools and they think of sports, and that's all they think about, but we've proven today that it not only includes exercise of the body with the group that we presented earlier on, but it also includes extensive exercise of the mind, and shows our ability as a district to put top-notch people out there, not only on the football field, the basketball court, but also in the field of chess. We're very proud of you guys for showing this community how diverse we are, how capable we are as a city school district. So let's give these gentlemen another round of applause. You know, suburban districts say what they want, but they're not the chess championships, they don't have the diversity that our district has, you can't get that in any other place. So let's give ourselves another round of applause, that's good stuff. And then, we got two more awards, I'm gonna recognize Lynn Stansel, are you here Lynn? Lynn are you here? Come on up. Give her a round of applause. Now you really should be applauding this guy, you really should. We wanted to do this because, what a blessing to have someone work in our district for four, is it 49 years? About 50? But, altogether in public service for 50 years, just about 50 years? Let's give him a round of applause, that's incredible. And when he says, not just in the district, his service included, service for the Rochester City School District, the city of Rochester, and Monroe County. To show that kind of commitment to this city, to this community, is something that really we can't put on a plaque, and we can't even really give you what you're deserving of should you, if you retire, are you retiring? The retirement check that you will get from us won't show what we, yeah, probably really won't show. The thanks that we have for your service. And I realize that this is a piece of wood with some words written in brass, but I really want to convey, not just the members of the board, not just the members of the Rochester City School District, but from everybody in this community, we are honored and blessed that you would choose to serve our city, our community, our county for 50 years, and we want you to remember that hangover when you look at this plaque. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you. And he's a humble man, he doesn't want to say anything, another round of applause for wonderful. Mr. Adams?
Blessings.
Thank you. I am so, so pleased to present this special recognition for one of the programs that really stands out as a successful program for our students, and it works on so many different levels to improve conditions in the district. Not only does it serve the students who are part of the program, but it also is a very effective and direct way to increase the teaching workforce within the district who come from within the district. And in particular, we have a goal of increasing teachers of color, and this is an effective way to do that. So I really want to, and bilingual teachers, and teachers who are really connected to our students, and also there's many stellar members of the community who are not educators who came from this program. So without further ado, I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas, the Teaching and Learning Institute at East High School was created in 1996 by visionary educators to grow and attract teachers from the Rochester City School District's student population to diversify the district's faculty. And whereas, the Teaching and Learning Institute at East High continues to work to provide students with a cooperative democratic learning environment where they are empowered to lead and educate others. And whereas, the Teaching and Learning Institute has prepared students for success in college, given them work experience in high school, and offered students a rigorous curriculum relevant to their lives. And whereas, the Teaching and Learning Institute further supports secondary level students by promoting standards of excellence in academics and civic behavior, and whereas, the Teaching and Learning Institute is fervently committed to empowering students and to creating an awareness in social justice in the community. Therefore, let it be known that on the program's 20th anniversary, the Board of Education honors the Teaching and Learning Institute and the contributions of Daniel Delahanty, Laura Delahanty, and all who have contributed to the program's success for their dedication and continuous service to the Rochester community. And this is signed by President White and Superintendent Simmons. And it's my honor to present this to representatives from the Teaching and Learning Institute, if you can make your way to the front.
Hello, my name is Daniel Delahanty, this is Laura Delahanty, and she's my teaching partner, my wife, and for 20 years, our students have been writing lesson plans, discovering the different multiple intelligences, studying adolescent psychology, the sociology of education, the professional expectations of teachers. When our students visit colleges, we don't go just to visit, we conduct research and we make presentations. The senior year of our program, the Teaching and Learning Institute culminates with an 80-hour paid internship. This gives our students an edge up against their competitors when they apply to college. Our students graduate and go on to become teachers and leaders in our community. Mr. Robert Snyder, Mr. Anthony Plonzinski are here today supporting us, both graduates of our program. Mr. Snyder is now my teaching colleague at East High School. For 20 years, Mrs. Laura Delahanty has led the way in this mission to diversify the teaching corps, to prepare students for success in college, and to pursue social justice in our community. If you know a future teacher or leader who's in the 7th, 8th, or 9th grade, you gotta send them our way to the Teaching and Learning Institute because we are doing our very best by our students, and they are doing great things. I thank the board for this recognition, and it's my pleasure to be a teacher here in the city of Rochester, thank you. You know, we struggle sometimes to have an identity as a district, and for many years, one could argue we didn't have one. People thought of us as this district where there was violence, was disruption, and I don't want you all to miss the significance of the Code of Conduct that probably will pass tonight, but, woo-hoo, you can do that, you can do that. But I also want you to remember, we're much more than stopping violence and ensuring appropriate behavior. We are the Teaching and Learning Institute, we are the number one chess team, we are the optics program, we are Edison Tech, we are so much more than folks have branded us. And it's your responsibility, as the Delahantys have proven, to show folks what we are, as the students did in the chess team. By the way, chess team, I forgot to give you your plaque, so will somebody come up? Come on, come on, come on, come on, somebody come up. I've never seen people so slow to take them. Give them a round of applause. In addition, we have a lot of recognitions to offer up tonight, is Reverend Dolores Simpson and Wanda Ridgway here? Alright, Ms. Ridgway, give her a round of applause. They're going to reveal to us the winners of the poster contest.
Good evening everyone, we're actually here to represent Reverend James C. Simmons, who is the Rise of Rochester chairman. Again, this is Wanda Ridgway, who's the executive director, and Serena Cotton, who is the founder and CEO of Rock the Peace, and we work in collaboration together with the Rise of Rochester and other things that we do in the community against violence. We want to let you know who is Rise of Rochester. Rise of Rochester Incorporated is a nonprofit that empowers the community to establish and maintain a non-violent culture, and provides support to crime victims and their families. Since 2008, countless families that have had their lives turned upside down by homicide have received needed support through Rise of Rochester programs, like its monthly support group and annual service of remembrance. Hundreds of classrooms have learned how to prevent violence in their neighborhoods, and thousands of students have taken a stand against violence through the Stop the Violence billboard contest. What is Stop the Violence billboard contest? It's the Stop the Violence billboard contest is an opportunity for Rochester City School District students to take a proactive stand against violence, especially homicide, and its sixth year, over 2,000 students have submitted artwork that promotes non-violence, crime recording, and making healthy decisions. Selected artwork is placed on billboards in the city and in other locations like Strong Memorial Hospital, Rochester City Schools, and local businesses. Wanda Ridgway will now present the awards for those students who won this year.
Good afternoon. I first want to thank the Rochester City School District for allowing us to go into the schools to speak to the students, and they were very amazing. I want to thank the teachers who supported us, and, you know, the awards reads. Certificate of Excellence to the student is committed for taking a proactive stand against violence in the Stop the Violence billboard contest, signed by myself, Wanda Ridgway, the executive director of Rise of Rochester, and Reverend James C. Simmons. And the first, I'm gonna call you all, guys, all up, and you can just line up right here. Kevin Dalia, Dalia, from Early College High School. Is it Adrian Nadine, from Leadership Academy for Young Men? BB, from Wilson Foundation Academy. Gianna Novell, from Henry Hudson School Number 28. Sarah Singh, from Charles Carroll School Number 46. And Jamaz Tramel, from Clara Barton School Number 2. And Lillian Mackman, from Theodore Roosevelt School Number 43. And Edwin Washington, from Theodore School Roosevelt School Number 43. On behalf of Rise of Rochester, we really want to thank you guys, we love the billboard contest, they will be placed throughout the city starting in early September.
In case you all didn't notice, they have these awards standing, it's a really nice award, it actually is a billboard, miniature billboard, and the actual posters, oh sorry, the actual posters, the winning posters are in the mini billboards, is that right? That's wonderful, let's give these ladies a round of applause. Again, when you talk about branding our city and our school district, we gotta think about ways in which that can be done. It's not only done by teachers and principals, but it's in staff members and superintendents and school board members, but by parents, and one of the things we'll get to tonight, committed community servants who decided that we needed to change the way we dealt with students in terms of discipline. But I want to thank these ladies again, and everybody else who helps us contribute to understanding, having the community better understand what we are as a district. So let's give them another round of applause. And one other, one other group that we wanted to take the time to show our appreciation to is ATAD, is Alicia Ward here?
Thank you very much, Commissioner White, and to all the commissioners and the Rochester City School District parents and students. It is truly with pleasure that I stand before you to share with you about the Association for Teenage Diplomats. Association for Teenage Diplomats was founded in 1951, an organization that provides cross-cultural exchanges. We provide the opportunity for students within Monroe County to travel overseas to various countries, predominantly the countries that are our sister cities, as well as for persons from those cities to come to Rochester's area schools. Each year, honoring the life and the work of teacher Gary Simon, who was a teacher at Wilson Magnet School, who provided opportunities for his students to travel overseas, we developed the Gary Simon Memorial Scholarship. This scholarship provides the opportunity for a student from the Rochester City School District to have a opportunity to travel without tuition. So it's a free trip to one of our countries for either a summer or a school year. And this year, the Gary Simon Memorial Scholarship goes to Zaria Belucci, and Zaria is a 12th grade student, she's graduating from the School of the Arts. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to be here with us, but I wanted to announce to the world that Zaria Belucci is the Gary Simon Memorial Scholar for this year, 2016, and those of you students who are in the Rochester City School District, in the future years, you too can be the Gary Simon Memorial Scholarship winner. Anyone interested in ATAD as a host family or as an exchange student, please check out our website, www.atad.org. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ward, we do appreciate your organization, and again, I'll just repeat, it's Association for Teenage Diplomats. Again, another opportunity to see how different and what diverse opportunities are available to our students. We're going to sort of go away from the script a little bit, because there is a pressing issue that I'm sure most of you want to attend to right away. So what I'm gonna need to have from Commissioner Cruz is a resolution to discuss, a motion to discuss Resolution 856. Commissioner Cruz has moved the discussion on 856, there's a second? There's a second from Commissioner Adams. Any discussion or comment, but before there's discussion and... But before there's discussion and comment, I understand that there's a video that we'd like to show.
I'm not gonna take up too much time.
Yes, please.
This is a representation of the community, what happens when the community comes together, or how the difference can be made. And that when the community really gets behind something, we can move mountains, we can change lives, and do these things. And when the community speaks, we all should listen. So when we say go yes, go yes. So literally, this was a community effort. I mean, we started shooting. First of all, thank you to Task Force Two. Thank you, Fonkey. First, Fonkey, Fonkey is a poet. Thank you, Fonkey. When we were doing this, we were shooting this. It's actually amazing that we started out with like 10 people, and then people literally driving by, walking in the community, got out and just wanted to get involved in like other projects. So when the community really gets behind something, it's infectious, and we can really make a difference. So I'm gonna say this one time, along with keep Miss Hope at Wilson.
I guess that is a good way to begin the conversation. Anybody want to start? We can start with Commissioner Adams. That seems to be appropriate.
I would like to recognize that Adrian Elem is a graduate of Wilson, Rochester City School District alumni. A successful graduate of the University of Rochester, and most importantly, a community leader with the organization Black and many other righteous endeavors. So we are really, really fortunate and blessed to have him and so many other members from that organization and from the community as a whole in the audience. I am going to limit my comments regarding the code, which is the discussion item on the table, to the fact that it will be discussed by the community. We will hear many community voices from different perspectives. And I would just like to thank everyone. And I may make a few comments during my audit committee report regarding more, you know, back to the more sober issues at hand regarding the Code of Conduct and behavioral interventions and supporting our students positively. Because it is a day for celebration, but there's no time to, you know, to stop really paying attention to the very, very serious issues at hand that really don't have anything to do with a piece of paper or the code that we're passing today, but have to do with our overall ability to move. So thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
I just want to say thank you to everyone who was involved. I was reminded about, what, about two, two and a half years ago, we had the same kind of forum with regard to reproductive health care, health education in our district, where people came together. And it was several students who came to me and said, hey, you're chair of the policy committee. Let's talk about reproductive health education in this district. And from that little conversation, we went a long way to get all the kinds of things that we've got in this district with regard to that. And this is the same kind of a situation where it was an idea that was germinated out of frustration. All right? But people came together, and the strength and the power when people come together is absolutely amazing. You should be congratulated for all the work you've done. We certainly appreciate the support that you have provided this. The video is phenomenal. You know, it's something we should probably play before our meetings, just as a sort of reminder of why we're here and what we do. And so again, I want to congratulate you. There's only one thing, though. It doesn't end with a vote tonight, right? It begins with a vote tonight. All right? So... And what you're gonna get from the district is total and absolute support for this process as we move forward, because we all know that it's just paper right now, right? The test is what we do as a community to make sure that we implement this. And are all the answers in here? No. There's still some answers out there that we need to get. But we also have to be very flexible as we go through this process to make sure that we're doing the right things by our students, by our parents, and by our community. So again, congratulations on a phenomenal job. I look forward to the vote, and certainly I will vote yes.
Commissioner Hallmark?
So it's so wonderful to look out and see a room full of happy faces and excited faces and feel like we're doing the right thing. I'm excited to vote yes on this. It's certainly a living document. And the piece that I want to make sure that we focus on as we move forward is that we have the accountability piece where the community comes in and checks that we're on track every year, more often than a year. So we'll be looking for that kind of connection. Thanks.
Mr. President, I only have one comment and one question. There are 11 people signed up to speak on this. Have they all waived their time to speak? Or are they going to be coming up to the light to speak now?
No, no, no. I wasn't intending on they would waive their rights. I just wanted to get the vote, do the vote. But people may still want to speak.
It's just that we're assuming they're all here to urge us to vote for the code. So if there's anyone who has something else to say about it that we want to give them a chance to speak before we cast our votes.
I appreciate what you're saying, but I wanted to cast the vote. And if somebody wants to say afterwards, you shouldn't have voted yes, they can say that.
Okay, all right. Well, and that's fair because we... And that is fair because we had a public hearing.
Sure, absolutely.
In fact, we devoted that public hearing to the new Code of Conduct rather than discussing the existing policy. And I appreciate that everyone has had an opportunity to speak to the topic, both in the committee and the task force, to the policy committee, at the public hearing, and so on. So hopefully, anyone who has concerns has had their concern vetted with one of those forums. I also, you know, feel a need to thank my colleague Mary again. As humble as she is, she'll tell you she's just one member of the task force. But yet, the end, she was the one that put the critical words on paper and made sure that the last-minute changes and lingering concerns were sort of hammered out, at least so far as everyone could live with it. And that active role was vital to bringing it to the table today. Thank you, Mary.
Well, on the topic, I've seen a lot of yeses, so I'm gonna vote yes, too.
And then finally, to conclude the remarks...
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, sure.
This is such a great picture. Can I take a picture with all the signs say yes? I just, I wanna, it's great, you know, it's such a great image. Okay. Thank you. Oh, more. Give them up.
Okay, Liz, you will share that with the rest of your colleagues?
I will.
Okay. Let me just conclude by saying, and it's entirely coincidental, when I was addressing the folks here that had gathered at 6 o'clock to recognize our athlete scholars, I quoted Helen Keller, who once said, "Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much." And it just so happens, in this video, you talk about what we can do together. And in fact, as my colleagues know, in my presence report, which I sent out today, I quoted Helen Keller. So what you all have done, not so much on the video, which I think was remarkable, and I think Commissioner Cruz is right, we could use that in any number of contexts, not just in this one. But what you've done as a collaborative group to move this very important topic forward, we can never really tell you how thankful we are, except through casting our vote yes. But as others have said, that's just a word, right? I'll keep it real with you. This is, as Commissioner Cruz says, just the beginning. And we have had, I don't want to put the water on your fire, but the reality is we have passed many resolutions from this board, and many of them have not been implemented. And I think a number of folks have said, it's incumbent upon you, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that this is more than just a word.
We here for it.
All right? I know you are. I know you are. I know you are. But let me, let's have a dialogue here. Today, there's a lot of you here. Next monthly meeting, how many will be here? All right, raise your hands. Put the cards up. That's what we need. That's what we need. And not only at board meetings, you all know this better than most of us, you need to be at the schools, right? You can say amen to that, right? Right? That's how, this is the beginning of something very, very special. This is the beginning of something very, very special. And it will be more important, what you do tomorrow than what we do today. You understand that? So with that in mind, and with that understanding, I'm gonna cast my vote yes. The signs have convinced me that that's what I must do. So all those in favor, I'll tell you what, let's do a roll call vote. Commissioner Powell, we'll start with our student rep advisory vote?
Yes.
All right. A little suspense there. Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallmark?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Yes.
And let's see, hmm, yes! As I, you can have more than three minutes. All right. So now we've got to move on to our speakers' agenda. I don't want Commissioner Powell's comment to be lost. I didn't mean to be flippant about other people's right to oppose this vote. You have every right to articulate that tonight. And as Commissioner Powell pointed out, you had the opportunity to do that earlier. And even for you folks out there that oppose this, you understand that for you, too, this is just the beginning. If there's some concern you have about some provision of this Code of Conduct, there is a lifetime to get it right. So you have to commit yourselves to tomorrow as well. So let's begin with Andy Atkins. Andy Atkins?
Hello, my name is Andy Atkins. I'm a current senior at Wilson Magnet High School. I've been in the City School District for three years now. I moved here from Orlando in 2013. Throughout my three years, I have seen so many problems in the City School District. One of the biggest is staff displacement. The reason I started at Wilson was because of the IB program. It was what I believe the best program our district has to offer. And I think something that makes it so strong is the dedicated teachers. One of the best teachers, one of the best teachers I have ever had at any school is Libby Tobin.
That's all right. Take your time.
She was my global teacher when I was a scared, impressionable 10th grader from out of town and has been able to be with me until now as I'm about to leave to go to my dream college, Duke University. She taught me how to stick up for myself, to be a leader, and also helped me to continue striving for my dreams. Not only does she have excellent talent as a teacher, but she has a gift in making students feel welcome and safe in her classroom. When we come to school, we come from varying backgrounds. Many of us have to deal with extremely stressful situations at home. Ms. Tobin understands, and that is something that every school community needs. At Wilson, we cannot afford to lose that. Wilson, as an IB school, says we have a standard of excellence. And with that standard, we need stability. As a district displaces teachers based off the population of the school, you guys do not take into consideration the gap you're leaving in our education. With IB, we need trained, experienced teachers that help us to take on extremely rigorous two-year courses and exams that take place in May. When you guys take our teachers, it's like starting from scratch. We need the same teachers that are with us from the beginning that have been teaching for more than five years to help us get to the end. Ms. Tobin is the most qualified person for teaching the History of America's Course, the only IB history course that is available in the district. Taking her away from Wilson would leave next-year seniors as well as the juniors at an extreme disadvantage. It's extremely discouraging to see a Board of Education that is supposed to have a dedication to creating better schools displace such a valuable piece of the school's community. Ms. Tobin is just one example of countless teachers that are wrongfully displaced. Please consider this decision to displace Ms. Tobin and reconsider the methods of displacement throughout this district.
Destiny Coens? Destiny Coens? Destiny Coens? Cowens, Cowens? I am gonna mispronounce names. If James Cleveland, you say, please be patient with me. No offenses intended. Adriana Allen is next. Ms. Cowens?
Hello. Hello, my name is Destiny Cowens. I am currently a junior at Wilson Magnet High School. I've had the pleasure of having Ms. Tobin as a teacher for my ninth and 11th grade year. And I can really say that none of the teachers I've really had ever really had an impact on me how Ms. Tobin has. Ms. Tobin has really helped me, not just academically wise, but just in life. Ms. Tobin has really helped me, not just academically wise, but just in life. I believe that students in the Rochester City School District aren't being taught to their full potential, and being taught by teachers who only care about the bare minimum, and that's not what Ms. Tobin does. Ms. Tobin, she really is passionate about the things that she teaches, and she wants us to understand and learn and have fun with history. And I believe that a teacher's job is not to only teach the coursework and make sure that students get passing grades, but that a good teacher makes sure that their students has goals for themselves, and that, sorry, and that they help them strive for these goals beyond the classroom. And I know that with Ms. Tobin, this year, I kind of really struggled with just academics and just personal life, and Ms. Tobin really was there by me the whole time. And I know that we don't really have a lot of teachers at Wilson who really care, not just about your academics, but about you and how you're doing, because being in the IB program, it's really stressful, and it can really take a toll on you. And I believe that the displacement of teachers really disrupts the learning environment in our school amongst the students and staffs. And I believe that the students deserve to have their teachers who really help them and push them to do better, and we shouldn't just have teachers who really don't care about our well-being. And, yeah.
Adriana Allen will be filed by Nature Henderson.
Hello, I'm Adriana Allen, and I'm currently a student at Wilson. I'm gonna be a senior next year. And I'd like to talk about one of my favorite teachers, Libby Tobin. School can be very stressful, and there's an immense pressure on students to succeed, and when a teacher comes along that makes that easier, you know you found someone special. Ms. Tobin was my global history teacher my freshman year, and my HODA teacher in my newly completed junior year. Learning with her is almost as easy, is always, is almost always easy, and even when it's not, she's excellent at finding a way to make it so. Ms. Tobin makes history, which admittedly is not my favorite subject, very interesting and fun to learn. And to lose her as a teacher would not only be bad for my education, but bad for me as a person. Ms. Tobin cares about us, cares about every single one of her students, and has a connection with all of us, and having her displaced would not only fail her, but every single one of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Allen. Nature Henderson. Nature Henderson to be filed by Emma Frank.
My name is Nature Henderson. I recently just graduated from, I got my last days done at Wilson High School. I had Ms. Tobin since ninth grade, then have her 10th grade, got her 11th and 12th, and I'd like to say it's very nice to have a teacher who really shows that she cares about you. And it's more than just trying to get the grade, a teacher that's good on paper, but a teacher that wants to build a sense of comfort and familiarity with the students. I remember I had times I was dealing with personal issues, and Tobin was a teacher who really had the desire to reach out and try to see what's wrong, get to know you, what you're doing, or what you're dealing with. And I feel as though she sees the potential in students, and she takes the time to organize events and stuff, seminars and whatever, that we have the potential to go to and speak our mind about what's wrong with the community and stuff. And I feel as though there's a certain bias in regard to the displacement, because there are good teachers who really contribute a lot to the district and to the schools, but they get their, they get, their jobs are in jeopardy and stuff because of their seniority, not being in the district long enough, even though they've been constantly here working hard, trying to do whatever they can.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Emma Seratilio-Frank. I'm sorry, I probably made a, help me out with that pronunciation. Serantilio?
My name is Emma Serapilio-Frank.
Serapilio.
I am a, just finishing my junior year at Wilson High School. And I think we, all the students who are here tonight for Ms. Tobin, we come here with the intention of getting all of you guys to acknowledge the impact that she has on students' lives. When I found out that Ms. Tobin was being displaced, we were in our classroom, having some lively discussion about teacher displacement, when she brought up the fact that she was being displaced. And our entire class went silent, and tears were brought to everyone's eyes, because the thought of losing a teacher who cares so much about her students, and who has such an impact on the lives and the futures of our students, was just shocking. And to see our community, our Wilson community, come together and extend to almost 300 petitioners signing to keep her around, it speaks volumes to the impact that she has on us and the importance she plays, not only as a teacher, but as someone who's just a person and who cares about her students. She's the kind of teacher who opens up her door at lunch or during any free period to help students when they need it, or to sit down and have a conversation with them if they're having a really rough day, because that's the kind of connection that keeps students in class and that keeps kids wanting to come to school. And we're in a district where that is such an issue, keeping kids in class, and to lose a teacher that keeps kids around just seems so silly. And I just would like you guys to know how much she means to us students, and not only the students, but the teachers at Wilson, and the families, and how we have kids here in their first and second and third year of college, you know, people who have graduated and are coming back because she is that important to us, and that that should not be lost. So, thank you.
Finnbar Gallivan. Finnbar Gallivan filed by Brittany Reed. Finnbar Gallivan filed by Brittany Reed.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Finn Gallivan, and I'm going to my senior year at Wilson Magna High School. I'm here to talk about both Ms. Meesinger and Mrs. Tobin. During my years at Wilson, these two ladies have been very important to my education and experiences at Wilson. During my first couple of years, both these faculty members established relationships, myself and students alike. They were to do this by reaching out to us, by engaging in school activities, and simply always having an open door. Like many kids my age, in high school, we underutilized the concerts. In part, this is because it can be a hassle, as they require many, many things to go in order to get an appointment. But Ms. Meesinger always had, her door is always open and always had an open ear. It's especially hard on my graduating class, as she is, as she's who've gone to for information on college, we have formed a relationship with, so that we can write, relationship with her, so that she can write our college letters of recommendation. It is most troublesome to me that she is being displaced, because over the past two years, she has had a great impact on our school, has become a friend and mentor of mine and many alike. Ms. Tobin has also become a very important member of Wilson. At Wilson, we take pride in our IB program, or International Baccalaureate Program. Ms. Tobin, who teaches History of Americas, has become extremely valuable to the program. She's been pivotal in getting students prepared for those difficult end-of-the-year exams. These exams and courses as a whole, as stated, is already rigorous enough, and taking her away is a decision that will not benefit us and is ultimately a mistake. Moving these two advocates will be detrimental to the school's atmosphere and culture as a whole. Many faculty members have already left from our school, so these two women's desire to stay at Wilson through a rather tough, rough time is admirable and shows a dedication that cannot be matched. The issue of displacement goes further than Wilson. It is a citywide problem. Our district claims that we are striving to compete with suburban and other striving schools, but we do nothing like those schools. This is a reoccurring issue, so I ask that not only the RCSD employees are saved, but those, not only these RCSD employees are saved, but those to come as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallivan. Brittany Reed. Brittany Reed will be filed by Trayvon Golden. Mr. Golden, you can step to the table so that you're ready to speak when Ms. Reed is finished. Ms. Reed?
Thank you. Throughout my academic career in the RCSD, I have learned that the relationships between students and their teachers are vital to the success of the student. The foundation of these relationships, I would say mostly consists of trust and communication. I have been very persistent in making those relationships with my teachers, especially as I entered the IB program in my junior year, and I strongly believe that my teachers, specifically Ms. Tobin being one of them, and others I have made relationships with, are the reason why I'm graduating as number six in my class, and the reason why I'm prepared... And the reason why I'm prepared to enter Howard University in the fall to begin my college career. Ms. Tobin works hard to establish a foundation with her students at Wilson, and moving dedicated teachers like Ms. Tobin would be detrimental to the students at Wilson. I'm certain that the relationship she has built with students will make them more likely to graduate. Students who are engaged by dedicated teachers feel like they have a purpose, and then work hard to make those teachers proud, and Ms. Tobin is that kind of teacher. She makes students feel like they have a purpose, and she is one of the most encouraging people that I have ever met. One of the major goals in the RCSD is to increase the graduation rate, and this isn't going to happen by shutting down schools and renaming them. It seems as if central office doesn't understand the importance of maintaining consistency for students with the teachers that they care about and that have had an impact on them the most, but probably because some of those in power don't subject their own children to this system. Had Ms. Tobin not been my IB HODA teacher for the past two years, I don't think I would have made it through IB. Her endless support and encouragement is what every student in this district needs, and her removal would certainly be detrimental to the IB program and to Wilson as a whole. It seems arbitrary and unnecessary, and I ask you to sincerely reconsider this detrimental action, because Ms. Tobin is an asset not only to Wilson, but to the district as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Trayvon Golden. Mr. Golden will be filed by Janetta Cook. Mr. Golden will be filed by Janetta Cook, if Ms. Cook could step to the left of Mr. Golden so that she can be ready when he is finished. Mr. Golden?
Hello?
Hello.
I'm a senior.
I'm gonna raise the mic a little bit.
Hello?
Yep.
I'm a senior at Northeast College Prep, and I was arrested at 16 for being engaged in a fight. And I resent it for a lot of reasons, but the biggest reason is it stopped me from going to Ohio State, where I wanted to go for college, and play football. So I wasn't allowed to do that, but I thank y'all for passing this new code of conduct. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Janetta Cook. Janetta Cook. Naisem, you're gonna help me out with the pronunciation. Jakarle Hill. Lydia Rodriguez.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lydia Rodriguez, and I'm the co-chair of AQE Metro Justice Education Committee. We at Metro Justice are glad this is happening. The new code of conduct is about students getting a quality education. Students are falling behind because of suspension and minor incidents. This is especially important for me, because my son has ball spots due to stress and other health issues that he's going through, but he cannot wear a hat to cover it up. If he wears a hat, it starts a power struggle between him and the school staff. But who benefits? Every child is an individual, and every situation needs to be treated with compassion for that individual. When we give a child love and respect, they give it back. As a community, we need to understand that there's a lot of issues to be dealt with, but discipline has gotten out of control. So it's hard for my son, because of the suspensions, it broke him down, falling so far behind because of suspensions, that he gave up and quit school. I don't want any other parent or student to go through this. The feeling of hopelessness, why should I do this? What is the use? It's like a race. You get so far behind that you don't want to keep going. We also have to deep, dig deep into bullying, excuse me. Children who fight back are suspended or kicked out of school. The behavior is wrong, but unless we address bullying, there is no real solution, and the child still lives in fear. It is even scarier to think that your child could be arrested at school. Everybody is not bad. We all have our bad days, we all have issues. Just because young people are young does not mean that they do not have issues to deal with. Instead of suspending our kids, help our kids. Help them to cope with everyday life. If the teacher cannot do it, find some help. It takes a village to raise a child. I'm grateful the code of conduct is finally being passed. I'm grateful that our kids are finally being given a chance, not to fall behind, but to be understood. So I want to say a special thank you to Mary Adams, Van White, Malik Evans, Willa Powell, Cynthia Elliott, Jose Cruz, Liz Hallmark, for doing the right thing. Make history and pass code. Thank you very much. Now it's time to implement the code.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Kenneth Lewis will be filed by Sally Williams. Kenneth Lewis and Sally Williams. Ms. Williams, if you're here, I appreciate if you could stand to, oh, you're right up front anyway, so that's good.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for passing the code. But before you had passed it, I was one of those who had something to say, so I'm gonna kind of change it, but I'm gonna speak in such a way that my message still gets out. I still have two kids in the city school district. I have one graduating for Integration and Architecture, June 25th, and I have one who has two years left. That is gonna be the challenge from him. I do not want my kids to compromise their identity, their character, and once they get onto the school grounds, they go into some sort of robotic mode. I think it's very important that our kids know who they are, and I sure want my kids to remember and know, once they go through that experience through the city school district, that they have their same identity and that they continue to strive for greatness. And just like you said, Mr. Van White, this is just the beginning. So I still will be a part of making sure that the code of conduct favors our children to benefit them, so that they don't have to feel though that, that they're hindered, that their goals aren't able to be achieved, and just like some of the speakers spoke, that touched my heart, because I am a parent, I am a grandfather, and by coming here tonight and hearing what I have to hear, I think that it's very important that this code is designed to do what it need to do, and I will be also helping out in a sense of supporting my kids and making sure that things stay where they are. So I want to thank you for the vote yes, but the work still has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Oh, it said thank you letter. Oh, wow, all right. We don't get many of them. All right. Okay, all right. Oh, all right. Can I take that for, all right.
First and utmost, I really, from my heart, really want to let you know, this is history. This is another historic event. For the first time in years, a change is being made that is gonna really directly affect our children, right? Now, what I want you to do, what we need to do more, is I'm sitting here, listening at these students come up here, one by one, one by one, one by one. They're in that classroom every day. I don't know how y'all displaced teachers, I don't know how y'all pick principals, I walked around and got about two or three... I walked around and got about 200 or 300 signatures from parents, so I know I get them. I don't know if y'all flip a coin or what y'all do, but I'm listening at these kids say, "These teachers are for us," which is different, right? The code of conduct, I promise you, I thank you, and you're right, we got a lot more we're going to have to do to go with it, and believe me, if I have to walk to 200 or 300 more parents, we owe this, right? But the one thing I do want to correct is it's not paper. When you passed that code, it was hope. It was hope for us. Now, what we need to do now is start listening to these kids. I know we got principals out there that was trying to get... What principal was that? I don't know who it was, but they were trying to get rid of the whole black history in their school. We need to really just start listening to these kids, right? When they say they got a teacher in here that care for us and we need to keep this one, keep that one. When they got people that's trying to get rid of culture, you might need to get rid of that. So there are some things not only on our side that we need to do. I think if you guys listen and really look and check out what's going on in school and your side, we're going to be all right, y'all. We're going to be all right. You know what? Everybody's sitting here, we're going to show them. We ain't just come here for y'all to pass that. We came here because we needed that. We come in here every time, on everything, we on top of it. We quarterly checking to make sure things are being followed. We're coming in as parents into the school district to help this go along. We're looking at kids saying, "Well, what teachers you think work with you? Maybe we need to keep them here for a minute." "What principal don't want y'all to know what black history is? I don't think she belongs with Rochester City School District." I'm just saying. We got some work we need to do, and we're going to have to keep doing that work. But the first thing we want to do is we really thank you. You've given us a chance, but we're going to have to take that chance, y'all, and find out what need to do. We're correlated with a lot of organizations. The teachers are sitting out here. I see admins and teachers from when I was in school in here, some of y'all. It is just a beautiful sight to see. I ain't promised you. Because you know what? We want to work with you too. It is not about parents. I hear it. It ain't about parents, it ain't about just teachers, it's about all of us. This is going to be a community admin, teacher, parent event, board event. Listen, y'all going to school too. It ain't just us. Y'all go visit and see what need to get done. We can't do it by ourselves. This is one of the highest-paid boards of education. Y'all come on, go with us, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Hank Rubin will be filed by Alkon Kalway. I know I mispronounced that, but that's all right. They're going to be patient with me. Mr. Rubin, you're up next. Hank Rubin? That's your name, right? Sorry about that.
My name is Hank Rubin. I'm with the Rochester Area Community Foundation, and I have had the extraordinary privilege of being part of this community task force on school climate from the start. Thank you. Thank you. I have very little to say except the following. Let me break down community task force on school climate. Community did this. Students, parents, teachers, counselors, administrators, school board members, senior district personnel, folks from every part of this city have been involved, philanthropy, social service. Let me suggest that that's a partnership and that the history of tonight is your vote not only to approve the code, but your acknowledgement that the code comes earnestly from the hard work of community people, lay folks, not experts in any particular element of producing a code, but lay folks who cared so deeply about every single element of that code and every child and teacher and community person who walks into that school and will be impacted by that code. So this is a partnership that will last much longer than tonight. Each person on the community task force really represented a constituency. I don't think, Mr. White, that you need to worry about whether or not we're going to keep showing up. And the other part of that is that it is the community task force on school climate, not on school code. The school code is a piece of a much more complex and integrated set of activities, behaviors, changes that need to be implemented as we work to implement the code over the years ahead. The code walks us into it. The range of school, of other elements, will help ensure that we're going to have climate in every classroom and every school that makes it so that every child in that classroom, every teacher in that classroom is in an environment that is conducive to effective teaching. So thank you for this evening. Thank you, community, for staying with it for a year and a half. We have a lot more to do.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Mr. Kalway? I know I'm always mispronouncing names. Could you help me out here and make sure I get it right this time?
So Alden had to leave, and somebody I really respect told me I should say a few things, so I think I'm going to speak for him, if that's okay.
Okay, all right.
All right. My name is Aiman Scanlon. I am the lead education organizer at Metro Justice and the Alliance for Quality Education. I started fighting for this project of ending the school-to-prison pipeline in Rochester two and a half years ago, and it took a long time to get to this point where we have this document, and I want to push back against one thing. This document does matter. These are laws. These are the rules by which students can be removed from their education, and that matters. There's a difference between dropping a pencil and punching somebody in the face. There's a difference between bringing a knife to school and playing with safety scissors when you're seven years old. But those incidents have been treated the same within this district. As Trayvon spoke, he was arrested, he didn't hurt anybody. He got in a little tussle. I met a woman a week ago. Her daughter was suspended for two months because she wouldn't give them her cellphone. Two months? Do you think you could graduate on time if you missed two months of school? That is a criminal act. That is the real crime. Every student in this district deserves their education. They have a right to it, and we can't sacrifice that for a little peace and quiet. We can't sacrifice that because of biases, racism, homophobia, sexism, ableism, a hate, transphobia. I don't care what your hangup is, your bias, your need to oppress, but it is not your right, it is their rights. And everything we do from this day forward does matter. I didn't come here just to pass a code. I would have done this a year and a half ago, but there was resistance. This was a fight to get this, so I don't want to hear it doesn't matter. If it didn't matter, I wouldn't have had to fight tooth and nail for two and a half years for this moment. That means it matters. So, yes, implementation is extremely important. I don't... You know, that really disturbed me. We pass a lot of things, but we don't implement them? What is your job? What is your job? Words matter. Listen, hear, do. Everybody here is going to make a difference because everybody here does matter.
Amen.
Thank you.
Beverly Usher.
Hi, I'm Beverly. One of those grandparents who are fighting for grandchildren who are in the city school district, who I'm here to let you know we do care. I'm also on several of the committees in the city school system, city school district, and also on the education committee and schools committees and PTOs of 44th School, the parent-teacher engagement team, all these, and I think I'm a very crucial part of Metro Justice and some of the other organizations here in our community. And what I'm here to let you know is, like a lot of these parents who are just finding out, I'm here to keep an eye on you. I'm going to be one of the watchdogs. I am going to be one of the ones making sure things get done, things get implemented, because I may not be the smartest book out there, but I'm sure by far a dummy. And I'm going to make sure that we put these rules and these regulations so that the common people can understand them and that they do get these rights out to them. They need to know. If their parents don't know, they don't know the amount of power that they have, and that is a crucial point of the code of conduct and all the other rules and regulations here at the city school district. Everything is so legally worded that the normal person who only has an education of 12th grade don't understand what they're reading. And the code of conduct is our first start to letting these parents know we do have power and we do have rights, and we just need you to work with us and bring it to where they can understand it and more, give it to them so they know their rights. All of us need to know our rights, our children need to know our rights, so we can be there to fight for them. Code of conduct, we're all behind it, and it's going to start there. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Harrison. Gail Harrison? Oh, I saw her here. There she is. She will be filed by Mary Lupien.
I wasn't sure that I would come up and speak because we have passed the code, but there is something that I consider to be very important. We've been talking about implementation and how that long that's going to take, et cetera. I would like to thank the board for having some things already in place, and if they were utilized to their capacity, we would be on a much steeper, less steep incline to getting this thing going. And the things that have been offered already are, one, the relationship model that has been proposed by Dr. DeGru, we know that that's essential. We know relationships are essential. That needs to be implemented by all of us, not just a few that have gone to hear her. There's another aspect called the therapeutic crisis intervention for schools. It's TCIS. This is a program that has been adopted by the city schools. For those of us who have taken it, the first thing that happens is, when a student is upset, the very first thing that happens is that that child, our obligation is to calm that child down, not to aggravate, not to make it worse, but to calm that child down and then to talk about the things that can be done to help the situation. That's TCIS. The third thing that the district has had for quite a while, some schools have implemented, some schools have let it go, but positive behavior interventions and supports, PBIS, is something that we have right now. And if our schools were to implement that, we'd be much further along, much further along, because there is significant research, there's significant evidence, and there are significant districts that have utilized this and have made a significant difference. And then the last one that I want to support is the restorative justice project. Now, I personally have been involved with that just for a couple of years, but that restorative justice makes a huge difference because it's not just enough to be suspended or to be upset. That relationship has to be repaired, and when the relationship is repaired, then there's a whole nother level of interaction that can occur. And for my students, what I've seen is that some of them have been able to solve their own problems because they have had the background of Peace Circle. That's huge. That's huge. The other thing that has come up is that sometimes I get overwhelmed because I'm doing all this testing, and students will come up to me and say, "Why can't we have Peace Circle? Why don't you come back to our class?" And I can't because of the time. So I'm really glad that there are going to be some additional psychologists that are going to be hired so that these kinds of things can be implemented to their fullest. I just have to reiterate again that I thank you for having these things already in place. I encourage everyone at some point. They have got to be utilized. It's just not enough to have the PDs. People are even reimbursed for these things, but they have got to be utilized, and we could get going right away and not have to take so long for things to get started because there is a foundation that is already there. Thank you.
Thank you. To be filed by Kelly Davis. Ms. Davis, I'd ask if you're here that you stand to the left of the podium so that you're ready to speak when...
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Mary Lupien, and I'm here representing Mothers Out Front in Rochester, and I have some information for each of you. Mothers Out Front is a group that started in Massachusetts and has spread to a couple of states now, but we are mothers, women, and allies mobilizing for a livable climate for our children's future. The issue that I'm here to talk to you today about, we've come, I can't remember if it was last time or the time before, to talk to the board about, and unfortunately, there's been yet another derailment, and I want to bring your attention to it. On Friday, June 3rd, a Union Pacific train carrying Bakken crude oil derailed in the town of Mojean, Oregon. Fourteen rail cars came off the tracks and four exploded over a five-hour period. These train cars that derailed and exploded are the upgraded version of the train cars that are supposed to be safe. The trains derailed at a relatively slow speed as it passed through the small town of Mojean. The portion of the track which derailed had been inspected by Union Pacific three days before the derailment. A major interstate, 84, was closed for 10 hours in both directions while first responders used river water to try to cool the tank cars... What I'm going to read to you now is a letter that we are asking the school board to sign on to. Many of our schools are within the half-mile blast zone that when these trains derail, they can incinerate anything within that radius. My own children attend Montessori Academy, School 53, which is on Sio Street, right next to the tracks in that rail zone. My home was in the blast zone, as is my job, and Rochester just happens to have the good fortune to have the most number of schoolchildren living and attending school in this half-mile radius in the entire country. So I'm going to read to you excerpts of this letter. Dear President Obama, please ban the oil trains. This most recent disaster in Mojean, Oregon demonstrates again that crude oil is simply too dangerous for the ramps. Every day, oil industry sends millions of gallons of highly flammable crude oil through U.S. cities and towns, over critical waterways, and dangerously close to the homes of 25 billions of Americans. We ask that you ban the oil trains and protect the American families and students from these inevitable fires and air pollution. And in the end of the letter, there are three concrete ways in which you can do that, and we urge you to sign on to this letter and also to a letter to our local New York state senators and representatives. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rubin. Kelly Davis. Kelly Davis to be filed by Ms. Monroe Sims. Hello.
I didn't think that I would find myself being here. I was here, what, a couple of years ago advocating for social positions to not be cut, simply because my son Andre benefited as well as other students from those services. I mentioned this, my son Andre, who's a student at school number one. He's one of my four children, my husband and I have. Our two older sons are students at Edison, and our youngest is in preschool. I'm here to urge our board members to allow school number one to return to our campus after renovations have been completed. I'm also requesting that the swing space adequately meet the school's needs. I would like the staff and parents to be included in the process for selecting the swing space. I'm also asking that students with special needs such as autism be allowed to visit the space prior to the start of the school year. The master plan that was developed for school number one has created a crisis for our school community. We will soon be wrongfully evicted and displaced. Sadly, school number one community does not qualify for crisis or housing services through the Red Cross or through the McKinney-Vento Homeless Children and Youth Assistance Act Services. We are relying on our elected... Those decisions would include ensuring safety, meeting the educational requirements, and ensuring that changes are made that will nurture students' social and emotional well-being. If we are to be a district that states that we have adopted restorative practices, how can we destroy a school community? One of the core components of restorative practices is establishing relationships which create a healthy and successful school community. I'd like each board member to remember my son Andre's face, although he's playing his game here. My intentions for bringing my son was to put a face to the master plan. Andre and our youngest son, our, our youngest son, Michael, who isn't here, are diagnosed with autism. Many children who have autism have difficulty with transitions. We know that uprooting any child can create anxiety and make them feel unwanted by the adults that they trusted. School Number One has made a commitment to educate and support all children, including children with autism. My child attended Number One School since kindergarten and we expect him to continue through grade six. My family members have attended School One for over 30 years. They are all very successful. My husband has found success in his career. My four nephews and nieces have all attended and graduated from MCC and RIT. My niece was just accepted to the University of Buffalo. My nieces and cousins also currently attend School Number One. We hope to continue this legacy of success by enrolling our youngest son in School Number One in the fall of 2017 for kindergarten. In closing, I feel as though the master plan for School Number One has failed to include the individuals that reside on the campus, which we view as our home. Please allow School Number One to return to our home after renovations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Monroe Sims, she'll be filed by Eileen Graham. Eileen Graham. Ms. Graham, if you're here, I'd ask that you stand to the left of the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Wilita Monroe Sims. This would be the first time that I've been to the board. I was gonna speak directly off my paper, which I will, but I stand here in a bit of disappointment. I have seen many of your faces when it was time to be elected, but I didn't see your faces when you derived the master plan. So that's quite disappointing to me. My purpose for addressing the school board is to express my concern regarding the displacement of School Number One. As a parent of four children, three of which graduated from Number One and one still currently attending, I am quite disappointed that the parents of Number One School were not informed of the changes that will be occurring. I am also very disappointed that our right to advocate for our children was overlooked. And now, as a result of that, my trust in you has declined. Number One School has provided a secure foundation for our children. It has prepared them for life overall, teaching them to be well-rounded, nonjudgmental, accountable, studious, reliable, and resilient. My son was diagnosed with ADHD, OCD, and anxiety disorder at the age of six years old. That pushed me to return back to school to obtain a Master's of Psychology and a Concentration in Behavior Health. During the time of his diagnosis, he was in the first grade and attending Number One School. It was very challenging for him and myself, and he has, and he was having difficulty transitioning, focusing, and having a positive, positively expressing himself, which in turn caused him to display behaviors. However, Number One staff was very, very, very patient with him and never gave up on my son. They displayed a strong interest in my son and a concern, not just for his education, but his overall well-being. Upon graduation, Dr. Harris, the principal, worked above and beyond with me and my family making sure I placed my son in a learning environment that would secure his success and meet him where he's at, as School Number One did. Today, my son is in the seventh grade at Leadership Academy and has an A's average and has had no referrals to the principal's office. He has excelled, he has excelled in tennis, which my son had issues with taking on new things. He has excelled in tennis, basketball, and other extracurricular activities. Today, I ask that you take the feelings and the lives of our children at Number One School and consider, as you implement your master plan, how it will affect the staff, the parents, and the teachers. Thank you.
Eileen Graham, to be filed by Catherine Ross. Eileen Graham, Catherine Ross. Charles Finley. Charles Finley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could everyone that's here to support School Number One, staff and teachers, students, if you're here, could you stand, please? This is my family. Okay, sit down. I'm the president of the PTO at, at School Number One. I've been working with the PTO through the school for the last five years. The school has done a great job of bringing together the parents and the teachers. Okay, it's, uh, we, we've, um, it's, it's, it's grown to be what a relationship between teachers and parents should truly be, regardless of how educated or uneducated the parents are. The parents feel like they're at home at, at the school. And the parents are often at the school for various reasons throughout the day. You know, you might go to school and the parents are just here to have lunch with their children. It's, um, a great experience. I have two children that go to the school, one of which I just took out of charter school to place back to School Number One this school year. And so, and in short, my son is very, very, very achieved, very, very, very brilliant, but he was diagnosed as being depressed while he was in the charter school. And I asked my son, "Why was he depressed?" And he told me all the reasons why. He told me that it didn't have gym. He told me they didn't have sports. They didn't have a music program. They didn't have recess after lunch. He said, "Most of all, the teachers treated him like he was a robot." With the help of the community at School Number One, in less than 45 days after returning my son to the school, he was no longer diagnosed as being depressed. Without any use of any medication, he is no longer under a doctor's care. With this revitalization plan that has been put in place for the school district, we realize it's something that does need to take place. We do need schools to be updated. We need schools that are safe. Okay? We agree with that. But what we don't agree with is when you have a school like School Number One that has a great working relationship between teachers and parents, to not have a relationship with the district? That's very, that's a fallacy of composition at its, at its greatest point. My time is up. I just hope that, you know, moving forward, you realize that we are going to be a part of this process. We want full transparency as to what you have planned for our children, and that's it. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Finley. Antoinette Poole will be filed by Peck Chun. Ms. Poole?
No, Ms. Ross.
Ms. Ross.
Catherine Ross.
Catherine Ross, I'm sorry. I, I called you earlier, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Mr. White. My name is Catherine Ross and I'm here on behalf of, it's called SOS, Save Our Students Who Are Headed to Special Education. There's a lot of cuts in special education that's coming out. My daughters fell through the crack at early college. I have an advocate because I don't know all exactly what are the, the rights of a student, but this is why I'm here, for the board. Not only that, I'm a voice for those students who, parents who are not here to represent them, so I can speak for them. There's too many cuts. There's this teacher who, who's at Monroe High School who's in special education, cut. She's gonna take a kindergarten class. You know what I mean? We need the same thing as Ms. Tobin, as a student, while they represent her as a teacher. We need to have special education teachers up here that can be recognized as them in the district, but it's no longer that because we are getting cut. All I'm asking you is to make sure that my child be saved and don't let her fall through the crack.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Antoinette Poole, is Ms. Poole here? She'll be filed by Ms. Chun, or Mr. Chun. Sorry about that. Ms. Poole?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Antoinette Poole and I am here for the displacement of teachers, specifically Ms. Tobin. I met Ms. Tobin 10 years ago. I was a graduate of Wilson-Magnat High School in 2008. And it's, I am like really kind of taken aback right now when I hear her students that recently graduated or that are graduating speak, because the Ms. Tobin that they described is the same person I encountered 10 years ago. She, I met her in 10th grade and she was just an amazing person that came into my life at the right moment. And I, not only was I not really given the opportunity to understand what the importance of education, I, I didn't really have that passion at that point to, for higher education until I met Ms. Tobin. And when I, I set that goal for myself, she helped me throughout high school. And when I decided to graduate, she helped me with applying to colleges, she helped me with applying to scholarships, and she was just an amazing teacher for me. She's very caring, supportive, well-educated, and she was very compassionate and just was there for me throughout the whole time of my high school education. And I graduated from Wilson and I, I got right into St. John Fisher College. And she was there with me at St. John Fisher College for the, the interview, when most of the, most people there had parents and I had my teacher, Ms. Tobin. And she sat in a room with me and spoke with the, the people who were taking students in. And she was there the whole time and, and it was, I, I can't even put in words the respect I have for her. And I look up to her as a person and a teacher and I just, I'm just, I'm just really shocked that this is actually happening to her out of all teachers. So, you know, I'm definitely, I'm happy to be here to support her and I'm happy to see all of the other students. Seeing them, it, it shows me that it wasn't, it didn't end at just me. You know, she continued to help inspire students in not only in their education, but through their personal lives as well. And I just hope that the board can help her to stay where she is, which is at Wilson, so she can continue to inspire students, just like she inspired me. And I thank you.
Mr. Chun, thank you, Ms. Poole. Mr. Chun, will be filed by Natasha Morrison. Natasha Morrison will file, Mr. Chun.
Can we all just give a round of applause for Ms.? Ms. Tobin, can you please stand up? Can you please stand up? I want you guys to see that face. I want you guys to recognize who she is, the woman who has changed hundreds and hundreds of lives. In little over 24 hours, over 200 people, 200 people signed our petition. In under a week, we have about 300 people. I want you to recognize that the community has spoken. Tobin is valuable. She's invaluable, actually, and she's changed lives. I think throughout these times that I've been sitting here, I think we recognize one thing, is that this district prides itself on changes in all the wrong ways. More than a school, a new school that's supposedly new with a new name, more than that, we need stability. You know, things like restorative practice, what is that for? That's for building relationship. Here's one, here's one that is so intrinsically at the core of every student that you see here today. And what are you gonna do? Bye, you're getting displaced. That is wrong. That is flat-out wrong. All right, so my name is Peck Chun. I am a student at the University of Rochester. I am a graduate of the IB diploma program. Thank you. And I could not have done it without Tobin. In my times in high school, I was the executive board of my school's leadership government and I was a part of SLC, Student Leadership Council, which is a district-wide student congress representation. And what that all means is that I've learned to stand up for what I think is right or wrong. I've learned to recognize that. And it's pretty obvious here today that teachers like Ms. Tobin do not deserve to be this place. Enough, we need stability, and the community has spoken. Will you hear us? Do you hear us? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chun. Natasha Morrison will be filed by Kyra Lauder.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Okay. I attended, my name is Natasha Morrison. I attended Wilson-Magnat High School since the ninth grade and I never envisioned having the experience that I did. I knew since the first day I was going to enroll into the IB program and be successful. Mrs. Tobin taught me global and in my junior and senior year, she taught me HODA, which is History of the Americas, an all-IB course. I like to first and foremost, history is not my greatest subject and some days I questioned whether I had enough perseverance to continue the IB program and gain the IB diploma. There were days I utterly broke down in tears and cried because the workload seemed unbearable and to excel in every class is what IB is built for, to be a well-rounded individual and academically conquer each subject. Ms. Tobin is not only a teacher, she is a mother to all her children which walk into her classroom who are ready to learn, whether you are reluctant or not. I remember I missed school for almost a week when our internal assessments were due. It's a part of our required pieces to IB. You have to do it in order to even question whether or not you're gonna get the diploma. Ms. Tobin called me every day and made sure I got up to come to class because she saw my potential when I did not see it within myself. It is, it is so humbling to realize you have a support system, not only at home, but at school. Ms. Tobin's love knows no bounds. She is unequivocally and undoubtedly the most influential teacher throughout my high school career, displacing the amazing, outstanding, and most accurate representation of what a Joseph C. Wilson-Magnat High School teacher is supposed to be in the International Baccalaureate Program, you will be losing such an amazing person. Ms. Tobin has never given up on her students, even her alumni, because honestly, I call her, I took History 199 at Niagara University, which I still attend, and there are questions I still have and she answers them to her best ability. Almost done. Please save her job so students can continue to learn in a positive atmosphere that they need to blossom and develop into the individuals that are admirable, just like her former students. The RCSD needs to take an initiative to use money and grants to keep teachers who are enrolled to specifically teach IB classes. Not anyone can teach an IB class and no one can replace Ms. Tobin. Do not replace Elizabeth Tobin. You will be losing such an admirable teacher and you will be shortening the education of the students who come into the IB program, who want to go to U of R, who want to stay in education, who want to go to college. in education, who want to go to college. Not anybody is equipped to teach an IB class, and if you don't believe me, please try it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyra Lauder. Kyra Lauder will be filed by Krista Anis.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kyra Lauder Williams. I graduated from Wilson Magna High School last year. I was actually in Raleigh, North Carolina. I attended Wake Tech Community College while I established residency to go to my dream HBCU, which was inspired by Ms. Tobin, by the way. I was in North Carolina when I found out that Ms. Tobin would be displaced, and I hopped on the next flight to show my appreciation. Ms. Tobin was my teacher from 10th to 12th grade, and I couldn't ask for not only a great teacher, but a great person to enter my life. People always say, "Don't mix business with pleasure," often, because it seems as though people are afraid of attachment and commitment. The whole point of finding a career that fits you is to love what you are doing. Ms. Tobin is not, has not only made it fun to teach, but also made it fun to learn. It was never about the highest score, it was always about completing your task to your best ability or understanding so you can prevent later confusion. Ms. Tobin was a teacher who taught each and every student to stand up for what you believe in, while taking others' opinion into consideration. She was a teacher who made you feel comfortable to speak with her about anything and guaranteed her help to the best of her ability. I can go on and on about my teacher, Ms. Tobin, but unfortunately, I don't like to cry in front of strangers. She's a wonderful woman, and I know for a fact Wilson commencement would not be the same without her.
Thank you, Ms. Lauder. Krista Anis will be filed by Tracy Comstock.
Hello, my name is Krista Anis. I'm a speech pathologist at School Number One, and I have been a proud employee of the Rochester City Schools since March of 1990. I felt compelled to speak tonight because a couple weeks ago, many of us found out through the newspaper that our students and staff would be moved out of Number One and may not be moved back in after renovations. We have received an apology for having found out that way, so that's not why I'm here. My goal is to inform you of one special aspect of School Number One, which will hopefully persuade you to help bring our students back to our building after the renovations. We have approximately 21 students in our school diagnosed with autism, as well as many other students with special needs. We have two self-contained classes specifically designed for these students with autism. After years of training, obtaining materials, and some staff changes, we have an amazing program. All of the students are doing extremely well behaviorally, as Andre's showing you right now, and making gains academically. We have successfully mainstreamed at least six students into general education classes and partially mainstreamed many others. We give them a safe and predictable environment. And as you should know, individuals with autism, and as Ms. Davis also said, they do not deal well with change, especially change that we can't rationalize or explain to them in a logical way. These students will demonstrate regression if they're forced to permanently leave our building, along with the staff that knows them so well and knows how to accommodate for their needs. Not allowing the School Number One students to return to our building will be completely devastating for many families. In conclusion, I would just ask, if the ultimate decision is to house only the other school's students and staff at that building, give us enough notice to prepare our children and our families so that we can transition them appropriately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Tracy Comstock. Tracy Comstock. Ms. Comstock is not here. Oh, you, okay. Alright, come on up.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak today on behalf of our school community, Number One. My name is Tracy Comstock, and I am a special ed teacher at Number One School. I prepared so much tonight, but I want to speak from my heart on behalf of the students' families and faculty and our school community as a whole. We did learn about this from a newspaper article, and our families and parents, our parents and families and students were devastated, so much so that we've had to really talk about this situation and how they can't understand how one school is valued more than another. And they're, and they were devastated as to, as to the point where they felt like they were put out of their home. And that's what they kept saying, "But this is our home, this is our place, that we come every day to this environment that is not just a school, it's more than that, it's our community." With all of the staff and the volunteers and all of our after-school programs that we have, it's more than just a school. And we were devastated and upset when we found this out. We are hurt that we are not a part of that process. You've left all of our families and parents and students out without even saying a voice, whereas the other school has been engaged in discussions all along. And that sends an awful message to our families that reside in the city, who want their children to go to a city school. We're supposed to engage our parents and families in part of, as part of their education. That's the goal, we have to work together, we're a team. You said it yourself, the Helen Keller quote. Alone, you can do little, but together, we can do so much. And that's how we feel at School One. And yes, it is devastating, and it is challenging for students when their home is taken away. And yes, children are resilient, but these children are special. Our school has not just an autism program, but we have hearing impaired students as well. And you are, you are forcing these communities out of their school that has been changed and altered for their needs. And it is so sad that we were never, never brought to the table and talked about this situation that is happening to us. And I just want to read this one letter that my, one of my students wrote, and she wanted me to read it to you. Her name is Delian, and she is a student with autism. And she said, "Dear School Board members, please don't close my school, it makes me disappointed. I don't want to leave my friends. Why can't all of us go to the same school? I don't want to go to a school without my friends. I love my school because it's like my home." And last but not least, this says it all too, every school is important, even school number one.
Thank you, ma'am.
And she ended it, "Love, Delian Quintana."
Thank you.
Please take this and reconsider what you, what type of decision that you've made, and listen to us as a community.
Thank you. Ms. Paloma, you wanted to speak, and come on up to the podium. I want to caution folks and remind folks, and I apologize for doing this while you're here, but we do have rules. And just to remember going forward, there's a speakers list, you have to call by noon. Everybody knows the rules, you have to call by noon, is that right, Madam Clerk?
I called yesterday.
Okay, okay. But for whatever reason, I'm not sure why, they don't, I'm not that high up on the list, they don't tell me why your name wasn't on the list. And I didn't, I don't want to personalize this to you, this is a learning opportunity. Because we had a couple instances tonight where people came up and spoke, and they weren't supposed to speak. Let me also tell you, you're not allowed to speak for somebody else who doesn't show up. You all, if you don't know the rules, those are the rules. We tell our students to live by rules, we create a code of conduct so that people can have expectations about how teachers and adults and young folks are to behave, we gotta have rules here. So, I don't, I'm not picking on you, it sounds like you did call in, I don't see you on the list, but we want to be, make sure that you have an opportunity to speak, because I know you want to speak to the code of conduct, so go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, guys, for passing the code of conduct. Now, we're on the step of implementing it, so hopefully we get there. I wanted to speak also on, you guys did say that you guys wanted to see us in schools. My parents are very much so involved in my brother's education, as so am I, and we have to give a 48-hour notice in order to get to the classroom. I don't feel it's appropriate for teachers to have 48 hours' notice to get their act right and start acting like they're teaching. Because not all teachers are teaching, it's checking his head, yeah. And not all teachers are doing their job the way it should be. And that's why our kids failed, and you guys have this curve and all these extra things that could be fixed if our teachers are teaching, all of them. Also, board members, you guys are out and about when you want signatures to be elected. I want to see you guys in the community, doing what we do, getting together. A lot of us are organizations out here, doing what we do, fighting for our rights, educating people on our rights. A lot of students don't know their rights, parents. And I think it's important for you guys to come out. Saturday, there's an event, you guys are having a parade. I mean, you guys come out for a parade, but I want to see you coming out for something other than just RCSD-related. Come meet parents, come to other events that you meet other people. That would be nice. And also, I appreciate that you guys gave a moment of silence for the victims of Orlando. I don't want to take away from that at all, but there are also situations where students from the City School District lose their lives to gun violence. Let's put some respect on their names, India Cummings, Brandon Spears, they deserve that as well. Respect your home. I mean, I know national headlining news is one thing, but this is where home is. Take care of home while you're also taken care of outside of home. Okay? That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, it's been a long evening, and we still have ways to go, but normally, at this particular point, I would take a break, but the parent advisory council, Erica Simmons, the chairperson or president, wants to give her report. We're gonna hear her report, come on up, Ms. Simmons. We're gonna hear her brief report, and we're gonna hear her brief report, then we're gonna take a five-minute break at the most, so people can gather themselves and come back and finish the rest of our meeting. Ms. Simmons?
Okay, thank you, because I was just about to leave, because I got three little ones out there that have been here since 6 o'clock. And I have to drive to Buffalo tonight, so thank you for letting me report out. I'll try to be brief as possible. I'm here tonight, and I do want to apologize to the boards for the nights that we haven't been here, but as you can see, I don't get to report out till almost 9 o'clock. I do have two young children at home. My vice chair had fell very ill this spring, so it's been very difficult for us to be able to make appearances, but you have gotten a report from you every single month, so I just wanted to have that recorded. So, our recent activities, we just had our family affair in the park the first weekend in June, and it was very successful. The calculation said that there was over 3,400 parents there that day, and I was there personally, and it was a great turnout, it was beautiful weather, so we want to thank the Office of Parent Engagement and the other members in the committee to make that, for making that happen, so we thank you for that. We also were able to collect about 10% of, 10% of surveys from the parents who did come to the family affair in the park, and we're going to be using those, hopefully, to continue surveying parents to see, you know, what they want as, to be a part and to be engaged within the district, and we're gonna be doing that through the summer and next school year. So, we will be meeting tomorrow to see the things that we can improve on and some of the suggestions that the parents gave us at the parent advisory council table, to see if we can implement those for the next year's family affair in the park. And thank you, President White, for coming, and Superintendent, you said you enjoyed yourself, and it was very nice to see you there as well. And thank you to whomever else was there. I know there was a lot of people, so if I didn't see you, I'm sorry. Also, thank you for saying yes to the code of conduct, that was part of my report that I emailed you. And I said that it was an opportunity for you to show your support for the code of conduct and the positive changes that it's gonna bring to our district and our parents, our families, and our children. I also wanted to thank the people from the community task force that I've been working very closely with during this time, who have, we have built a lot of valuable relationships with community members and other members, admin at the district, along with other members of the community task force to work with increasing parent engagement. Also, this Saturday, there will be approximately 15 schools that will be having parents trained in the restorative practice, restorative justice practices. Those schools are in your report, and we're really excited that those parents are going to be able to be in the forefront of training other parents and continue the education of this restorative practice within other schools in our district. So, I'm a big supporter of that initiative. So, that will be this Saturday, June 18th, at School 58. So, thank you, School 58, for hosting this opportunity for the parents to be educated in restorative justice practices. Lastly, as you will read in our report, the members of the parent advisory council, as well as many other parents, are still highly concerned about the controversy regarding the superintendent and the decision, which I do thank Vice President Elliott for emailing me and explaining the reasoning why it was a closed search and a closed interview process, which we do respect. But at the same time, we want to understand that we respect other people's confidentiality, but we want all stakeholders to always be a part of decisions, because at the end of the day, the people who are going to suffer, or the people who are going to be praised, are the students and the parents. So, we are always at the end of that totem pole when you're making these decisions. So, we just want to make sure, you know, that whomever you are bringing in is going to be here to serve the children and not serve the board. So, with that, I was going to ask that, me as a parent, I'm saying this as Erica Simmons, parent of two young children in the Rochester City School District, with you just passing the code, I think it would be very valuable, and I am inviting the entire board, as well as members of the parent advisory council, the bilingual education council, community members and parents, to be a part of a restorative justice peace circle. I think that we all need to come together and really be a part of the practice and be a part of the participation that you say that you're going to be promoting. And in order for us and you to be the leadership that we need, you have to put your money where your mouth is, I guess. So, I would really appreciate it if during the next several weeks or several months before the beginning of the school year, if we could all participate in a community peace circle for restorative justice practices. I think this would give us an opportunity to really test what we say we're going to do and build those positive relationships, including bringing in the new superintendent. I think it will be nice for us to be able to practice and preach what we want our children and our administrations and our parents to display. We have to lead by example. So, hopefully, we will be able to come up with some type of solution and be able to work together as a community to make that happen. Other than that, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons, and thank your children for us. We appreciate your patience, and safe travels.
Thank you. My son's like a gremlin, he's like, "Mom, it's getting dark out." So, we have to go, thank you so much.
Okay, to my colleagues, I'll say, I know I promised you we would just hear from Ms. Simmons, but we have a student rep. I'd like for him to give a brief report before we break, in case he has to go home and study for exams or something like that. So, go ahead.
To start, can I keep this name tag?
What?
In the front, can I keep that?
Yeah, nobody else has got your name, so why not?
I'll be taking that with me. But this year as a student rep on the board, I have received the chance to meet multiple people and receive great networking, as well as advice and ways to carry myself both now and the future. What I believe was the most fun about the position was how everyone seemed to say something to me. I think almost every elementary school student I saw always told me, "Hey, you're the guy on the calendar." Or at school, kids would ask me to fire a teacher, like, "I don't think I could do that." But those are always enjoyable. Unfortunately, I didn't get the full experience due to some very personal tragedies and issues, but the time that I did get, I learned valuable lessons. The lesson I tend to realize and recall the most often is from former Superintendent Vargas. He told me, "It takes longer for good news to get around than it does bad news." In this case, the good news is us, and what we're doing here in these board meetings, we're assessing issues and we try our hardest to solve them. It may not happen right away, but we definitely try. Some challenges I faced as a student rep was the difference between district-wide beneficial ideas and ideas that would only help individual students. I used to be one of the students that always thought the district didn't care about students because it felt like some days I was going to school in two feet of snow. But I realized how important it was to send children to school, especially with our current graduation rate, so the push is definitely necessary. For future recommendations, I would like to, I would like there to be more- Uh, for future recommendations, I would like to, I would like there to be more support for the Student Leadership Congress. In two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, when I was a regular member of S L C, we had a person dedicated to the organization. She helped us with recruiting members, scheduling meetings, and assisted with the overall running of the organization. This past year, we did not have a dedicated staff person, which made it very challenging. Attendance and recruiting were quite difficult. S L C was not as advertised as it could have been. Perhaps radio, social media, billboards, tech messages can assist in getting the word around earlier in the year. None of this can be done without allocating adequate resources to the organization. I certainly hope the district will help its commitment to students by allocating sufficient resources to give S L C a chance to be more effective. Uh, it's been an honor to serve on the board. My life has been improved by this experience. I will surely take these experiences with me to my four years at Saint John Fisher and beyond. And last, lastly, actually, I would like to introduce to you the new leader of S L C. He's in the back. You may stand, Jacquez Contran. Can you stand, please? And I also mentored him as he was in seventh grade, so you know he good, okay?
Okay, all right, all right. Um, thank you very much, uh, for your service. And, uh, where, where are you going to school? What's, what's happening next for you?
Uh, Saint John Fisher.
I didn't hear you.
Athletic training.
Athletic training, okay, all right. Well, let's give him a round of applause. Thank you very much. The, the, the reason why I didn't hear him, and, and, you know, we often have people lodge complaints or express concerns, and so I, I was leaning over and asking Linda about, um, the support that his group did not get. And so Linda was apprised of me of what the status is, and she told me that she would speak to Jerome Underwood, who's back there. So I use as example of, you know, sometimes you'll see us messing with our phones, our computers, talking to each other. We're not ignoring you. I, I think some people think, "Oh, well, they're not paying no attention." Sometimes we're asking questions about things that are going on that you're presenting, because at one point, some people say, "Well, what are you going to do?" And this is not the form where we respond, but that doesn't mean you're not going to get a response. And sometimes, even though you may not know, we're working on that response right away. So, um, thank you again for your service, and we're going to make sure the service of your successor is a little bit easier. All right? Thank you. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we're going to come back and finish up the rest of our agenda. Thank you.
I think you could just slide it out there.
We're going to get started, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get started. It is now at a little bit after nine o'clock. It's already been a long evening. I would, um, caution my colleagues that it will get even longer if, uh, we spend too much time sharing things that could be shared on written reports, but, um, it's your prerogative, as Bobby Brown would say. So, um, I'd ask that you keep your report short, and we'll begin with, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we're starting here, so, um, we're going to first hear from Commissioner Powell.
Where about the superintendent's report?
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Um, yeah, I'm sorry, Linda. We start with Sean. Sean was like, "What's going on?"
I'm sure they're like real brief.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz.
They're real brief, aren't they?
I can rush. I'm a rush as well. Cast play tonight.
Well, let's see.
All right, all right.
Oh, we're going to have competition. Ms. Scott, Ms. Scott, do you have the buzzer?
I see that in here. My timer out here, because...
Okay, he's got his iPhone clock going. Look, look at Sean, thinks he can do something with this.
All right, start.
Set up. All right, so, uh, I have a few slides I want to go through, and I want to, um, again, thank the board for their support throughout this year and, um, and challenging us to do the best we can do at East, and, um, it's been, it's been a great journey, year one. We're looking forward to starting, uh, year two. Um, some of the slides, uh, you've seen, we've made some adaptations just to give more data. Um, this is the attendance slide, and we just included the district's average daily attendance on the bottom. Um, we are really proud of what's happening, um, grade six through nine, and we, we know that, uh, and also it's happening ninth through twelve, but that's where our biggest struggles occur with attendance, um, and particularly attendance, class-by-class attendance that we're working and looking at closely. The next slide is behavioral chart. Um, it's encouraging tonight to hear, um, the support for the code of conduct and the emphasis on restorative practice. We've implemented that this entire year, and the two, uh, bright yellow bars illustrate how restorative practices has allowed us to diminish the number of out-of-school suspensions at East. Um, you see this over a thousand, uh, last year at this point, and we have a little less than two hundred now. And it has a large part to do with the commitment of our staff and trying to reengage students so they don't have, uh, repeat offenses. And we're also not doing things like suspending kids for truancy. Uh, if you skip a class, you don't get suspended for it, you know, you, you make up the, the work. And so that has had a profound impact on the school, keeping kids in class and in school, um, will definitely have an impact on graduation rates. Um, student empowerment becomes very part, becomes, becomes critical in this, um, this, this attempt. Uh, it's one thing for, for the adults in the system to demand excellence, um, from students, but it's a much better thing when students demand it of themselves. And so we are starting to train cohorts of kids with restorative practice to serve as peer mediators. It started in the lower school this year, grade six through eight, and we're going to build that out, um, to grades nine through twelve next year, where students themselves are, are part of those peace circles that we referenced earlier in trying to resolve a conflict and build positive relationships among students. Um, this slide here was, um, was something I brought up last week around retention. Retention defined as a number of students who don't move from grades nine to grades ten because they don't have, uh, more than five credits. And, uh, you'll just see some trend history at East, and, um, just about fifty percent of students every year have been retained from, moving from nine to ten, and that becomes a critical measure for us, and so I'm looking forward to report out in September what that retention rate was for this current year. Uh, we know if students don't move from ninth to tenth grade, they're less likely to graduate. It's been studied and researched in Chicago schools, and, um, it's a pivotal place for us, and we see, um, the impacts of these numbers year after year at East with number of students who don't make it past ninth grade. Um, this is just some cohort data that I'm not going to go into detail. It's for your review. You can send me questions to answer later, but this is our junior class of the two thousand thirteen cohort. About eighteen percent of them have already dropped out, and so we're trying to reengage those students, um, to take advantage of our alternative programs. Um, don't be alarmed by these numbers because students are sitting for exams even today, so these numbers will dr- change drastically in the next week, but just to illustrate how we're tracking student performance, uh, in ways that, um, give us a better indication of how students are doing and what we need to do to provide them better opportunities and experiences this summer and next year. And this is a summary slide that, um, that speaks to that. Students with disabilities also was a question we've, we've had to answer year after, after month after month, I think. Um, just to kind of illustrate that our specialized students were not kicked out and they were not moved, they're essentially the same percent as last year. I think that's been something that we've, a narrative that's, that was created, um, in September and has kind of continued, but I wanted to give the board, um, the real information about the number of students who are in our, um, students label of special, students with disabilities and that percent at East. Um, this enrollment, the support enrollment, support is the period in the day where we are able to catch kids up, um, probably best described as a study hall on steroids with teachers, um, con- content teachers there to provide it. And this is to show that the dollars that are spent to, to, um, that goes towards remediation impacts a large number of students. So in the twelfth grade, sixty-one percent, sixty-two percent of the students are in some form of support. That can be a half a period or it can be, um, four credits, like four periods a day or two periods a day equivalent. Um, another intervention we had this year, we put in mid-year, was with HOMES, it's called HOMES, um, having opportunities for motivation, engagement and support. It's a Hillside-sponsored, um, intervention, is not the Hillside, we're scholar necessarily. These are mentors, um, within the school, and you see that the yellow would be first marking period, the blue is second marking period, and I think that's magenta or purple, uh, for the third marking period. When we introduced, when we saw a need for freshmen to, to, to beef up the attendance efforts, we introduced this HOMES program with the support of Danny Wegman. And the attendance for those students that they, that they support, every, um, new freshman at, at East, attendance rate jumped to ninety-four percent for those students in the third marking period. And they're calling kids at home, they're tracking down the parents, they're following, they're actually sitting in their classrooms, um, periodically, and so it just gives additional support, and a lot of our resources have gone to the ninth grade academy because it's so pivotal that we get those kids to tenth grade with their proper credits and passing, um, the necessary exams. And how do we do all this? Yes, sir?
Well, be counted against you in terms of your time, but...
Gotcha.
Um, that HOMES thing sounds like it's a wonderful initiative, but then I flip back to the PowerPoint of the average daily attendance for, um, it looks like ninth grade, and it's, and I do not intend to be critical, I'm just trying to think critically. It, you, you, fourteen, fifteen, when you weren't there, it was sixty-nine percent, and then this year, it's seventy-two. I, I don't doubt you guys are working hard diligently and very, in a smart manner, and then you've added this fact that you've got this HOMES program. Why do you think it's so tough to...
Yeah. Well, so, so that seventy-two percent for ninth grade includes all ninth graders, and that's why we broke out the new nines and the old nines to give, and the, the next two, um, lighter purple, uh, bars there.
Yeah.
Uh, so the new nines are, so, so new nines are attending at a much higher rate than the continuing nines. Now, continuing nines could be any student who has zero to five credits, which means you could be a nineteen-year-old freshman at East. So it's not by cohort, it's by the number of credits. So, uh, it is difficult, um, for many of the students. It's, it's a, it's more rigorous and challenging. When you get to high school, there's more at stake, um, and, um, you know, and so that's why the intervention at HOMES became so important, because we saw, moving into the, into the first semester, that some kids are starting, starting to, um, to disengage.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And then, um, just wanted to, just to illustrate to the board how we do some of this work, and in the instructional time, that was funded through the E P O to extend the school day, has been, um, I think has been, has been integral in this work. So now, uh, in the old, the, the chart on the, on the left was last year's schedule, where you see there's eight periods in a day, one period was lunch, so students could get a maximum of seven credits per year. The schedule on the right is the, uh, the new schedule. It's an A B schedule, um, and so you see there are five periods excluding lunch, and students have a different class every other day, so there's a possibility to get ten credits within a given year every year. other day, so there's a possibility to get 10 credits within a given year every year. And so, just changing the schedule with the extended day allows our students more opportunities to either accelerate or to get remediation through, like, through the support structure. So, I wanted to share that with you as well, because there were some questions around, how do we get all this within the school day and the extra hour and the way we structure our, the academic program is the reason why we can do some of these things creatively.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Gomes?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge the work around the suspensions and keeping more of our students within the schools because they can't learn if they're not in school, so I do appreciate the work around that. And just one last question around your peer program. Now, is this, is there an opportunity for these students or other students within the school community to help other students academically?
Yes, yes, yeah, so in support...
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so in support period, support period is the period where we put a lot of focus on the academics outside the classroom, and students are parrot within those, within that time based on skills. There's some kids who are stronger mathematically at the grade level, but we also have sometimes secondary students come down and support lower school students. So, it might be peer-to-peer, it's same age group, but it's also upper and lower schools support that as well.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And that's also where a lot of our volunteers come in and do the work.
Sean, as you take your seat, I would just want to note to my colleagues and to you that, looking at these presentations every month and how detailed they are, and this is intended to be a compliment, so I'm preparing for it, if you all fail, we're in big trouble. You get that as a compliment because they really have drilled really deeply and tried to figure out what exactly is wrong. And with all due respect to people who have held your position, and actually they've had greater challenges, again, they have more schools, I have never seen this kind of constant attention to detail and problem solving. I mean, I just kind of, and I don't want to be, and I do not intend to be critical of other folks, because Linda's got 50-something schools and her predecessor...
She's...
Yeah, exactly, yeah, well, well, is that an offer? See, you heard it, it's on the record, right?
We don't have any contract yet. We don't have no contract yet.
That's right, that's right. So, so you get what I mean, Sean, and, and so great hope is placed at, at U of R and East High Schools, the whole team there, because the hope that I get from this is, the numbers aren't where we want them to be, obviously, but you, guys are clearly making an effort to understand the problem and come up with regular solutions for them, and I, I appreciate that.
There's just one other thought that came, I think, I, I think there needs to be some kind of, it's a strategic plan that determines what you're going to do year one, year two, year three. So, so it would seem to me that year one is to focus in on, you know, reducing suspensions, behaviors, and those kinds of things. Then, a year two, I don't know what that looks like. Year three, I don't know what that looks like, but I think if somehow a plan, a five-year plan can be developed around that, I mean, your minds, which are greater than mine with regard to education, I, I, I think if that kind of a white paper can be made available publicly, I think that it will help many of us to be in the community, to be somewhat okay with the amount of investment that's being made in there. So, just a thought that, that something like that, I think, needs to be developed for the community.
Six minutes.
Yes, I can do this in three notes, but I'll just say, if I could have 10 minutes per school for this meeting, we could be drilling down too.
Challenge, challenge. Wow.
Game on.
Man, she getting all bold, thinking she about ready to leave.
No, 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 she's been bold. She's always been bold.
She said, "Hey, you listening?"
Mr. President, at 10 minutes of school, it'll take you several months to get approved of that, so, you know, just want to keep that in mind.
That's all I'm saying, just saying.
She said, "That's all I'm saying, I'm just saying."
That's several months worth of work, so...
All right, here we go, three, three notes. I do want, ah, how come that's not working?
Your clock is ticking.
Oh, there we go, family, I know, family in the park, a family affair in the park. I just want to acknowledge the people who planned it, it was a wonderful event, 33 to 3,400 parents and their children, it was fabulous. This week, I had a chance to attend the Urban League Black Scholars Dinner, and for, for Rochester alone, the number of students increased from 85 students last year to 125 being recognized this year. So, that is a, that was, it was a wonderful event, and to see all those students there with those, those, that level of achievement, all of whom announced the way they were going to, it was just wonderful, but 40, 40 additional students from last year, so that's, I think, a great indicator. Why is this going the wrong way? It's almost, I don't know what's going, okay, graduation, not gonna say a word, you know about it. I don't know what, why is, this is like going crazy on me. Flip.
Oh.
Oh, how about that? This technology is just too difficult. Summer learning, we're dealing with 11,000 students, we're prepared to go to summer learning, big, huge program. Registration for secondary starts soon. Our district budget was approved at city council level this week. And, this evening, about one hour before, oh, 5:45, I see there, our facilities modernization plan was approved. Hoorah, 103 to 7 in the assembly, and now we have to put all of our resources together, all of our planning, all of our advocacy, and we need to storm the governor's office, so watch out, Andrew, we're on our way. This is a really good thing, which I had nothing to do with, but just before I came, and we just found out, we just got an about $700,000 grant, 350 for the elementary and 350 for high school. Ruth Turner was instrumental in preparing it, and we're going to be able to work with six, six schools on our campuses, and there will be additional social emotional supports for violence prevention, it will allow the pathways to peace to work in these schools, it will allow a full-time coordinator at those schools to implement student support centers, so we're thrilled about it. Thank you to Ruth, thank you to those in the grants office that helped to write it. We just found out, so it's, it's, it's excellent, it'll, it'll really help our, help our, combined with our other efforts.
Is that a recurring grant?
Pardon me?
Is it recurring, or is it one time?
We've had it for the last 18 years, we have it for 60 years this cycle.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm not gonna say anymore about the code of conduct because you've all said it all, and we saw the video, which was supposed to be here, so with that, there we go.
Wow. Dr. Gomes?
50 schools and I still beat them.
Challenge.
Right, you surrender?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Powell?
Our interim superintendent don't play.
My, my report is very short. We gave up our regular scheduled policy committee to do the public hearing on the code of conduct. That's already done. The only remaining item on our agenda is the multicultural global education policy, number 4350, which is in our packet and part of our resolutions upcoming. My next policy committee is scheduled for Thursday, July 14th at 5:30. Oh, I might have to reschedule it, I'm not coming back from vacation. That's my, that's my problem to fix, okay? That concludes my report, thank you.
Commissioner Hallmark?
Yes, Board Governance Committee met on June 7th. We had a committee of the hall, and we decided to purchase an online tool for evaluating the new superintendent. It's gonna be a great tool that will help us be more transparent and on task. We also discussed staff evaluations, and we have two retreats coming up over, well, one this Saturday, actually, with Superintendent Simmons, and one in July 26th with the new superintendent. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hallmark. Vice President Elliott?
Yes, Mr. President, I'll be brief, but let me just take a, a point of personal privilege, since I was not here for the vote of the code of conduct, I really want to congratulate everyone, Deputy Superintendent Christiana Toole and her staff, I think Deputy Superintendent Adel Vivar was also a part of that, and thank them for the work, the consistent work that they have done over two years or so, and, and I think for me, what's important is that when you have a community that comes together like that, Mr. President, and are working diligently on, in, in this effort, I think, first of all, it sort of alleviates some of the work that we have to do, and it also comes across as very collaborative. And for us to be able to support that effort on behalf of our children, I just want to, excuse me, thank the leadership, thank the members of the community, thank other staff for doing this kind of diligent, diligent work. I think that, you know, if we implement it correctly, and certainly there are going to be some lessons learned within this, I think that we're going to see a drop in, particularly our young black boys going into jail, and I think that with, in our communities, I think that we're going to see them to contribute positively to our community as a result of this code of conduct, so thank you all so very, very much for that. We met on, the Community Intergovernmental Relations Committee met on June 16th, and we discussed a resolution for the School Resource Officer Agreement, and I won't go into any of the details other than, now, we, we're not voting on that, that's not in this packet, is that correct? Okay. Okay.
Not the contract, just the resolution.
Just the resolution, okay.
The venture.
Yep, yeah, all right. So, we will support the, we will approve the contract, the resolution to enter, to, to begin the negotiations for the contract. And then, just wanted to highlight our parent representative, Yvonne Klinkscale, raised some questions about the implementation vision and the intent of the help zones in schools to ensure that they are true resources for our students. So, with that, and one other thing I'd like to point out, and I think we're gonna have to show Mr. Felix Jacobs, who's served with me for about 10 years on the Community Intergovernmental Relations Committee as the parent representative, he decided to do something else, and so, I had two parents, and so Yvonne Klinkscale will be the only parent representative on the Community Intergovernmental Relations Committee, so I want to thank him publicly for those efforts, and I'm really excited about the work that Ms. Klinkscale would be able to provide for us as well. So, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Do we acknowledge when a parent steps out?
We should, yeah, we should. I'll talk with Francine about that.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, we met on June the 9th, and went through a number of our recommendations. We received a financial report from the staff, I want to submit a motion to accept the financial report as presented.
So moved. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And for your consideration, this evening, there are Resolutions Number 815 through 837 having to do with facilities procurement, non-resident tuition, and more information and management technology resolutions. We also have three late submissions that we reviewed and are submitting for approval by the full board. The first one was RTS, to provide transportation for our high school students for the summer. Secondly, is a final payment for Hudson Insurance to take care of some site work that was, it was not done due to some difficulty with one of our vendors that was taken care of. And the third one was advancing the money for our FMP staff so that at least we can get the basics going in anticipation of getting the rest of the approvals that we need for our bond, for our bonding coming up hopefully sometime soon. And we reviewed and submit for you, your review and approval, all three of those late submissions as well. Our next committee meeting is on August the 18th. I do not anticipate having a July meeting because the staff is still closing out their June books, so we normally don't have a final report on finances until August anyways. In the event that we need to meet, we certainly will entertain having to do so. So, again, our next meeting is August 18th at 5:30. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Vice President Elliott, you wanted to add something?
Yes, Mr. President, I forgot to announce that the CIGR committee won't have its regularly scheduled meetings for the month of, the months of July and August, but we will host forums in those, on those dates to introduce the superintendent, the new superintendent to the community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Commissioner Adams?
The Audit Committee did not meet this month. Our next meeting is July 19th at 5:45 PM. I was going to give some details about the behavioral supports and suspensions audit, which was open in 2014 and remains open with really significant items that remain to be effectively addressed. I won't go into those, I had a lot of details, I wanted to kind of use that as a bridging to kind of bring us, sort of ground us as we pass the new code of conduct, which absolutely is meaningful. It's been very meaningful work, and it is a meaningful step to codify our intent, but at the same time, there is really significant compliance work with existing procedures, policies, expectations around behavioral supports, interventions, resources, and so forth, that are really significant work needs to be done even prior to the new code of conduct. We would be much closer to the vision of the new code if we could really effectively, you know, do the operations work and really get better at, at our basic management and mobilization of resources and so forth. So, not to be a, you know, wet blanket on something that I worked hard on and value very much, I did want to bring that to bear, that this, this very significant audit remains unaddressed on many dimensions. On some dimensions, good work has been done, the segments have been closed, but there's a lot of significant work to be done, so thank you.
Thank you for giving me that opportunity to segue into my comments very briefly about the comments that were made today. I think sometimes when we do our best to artfully raise up or praise and effort, for some reason, people hear what they want to hear. What I, what I heard from my colleagues, from you all, was, "This was important," but probably, I, I'll stand by, more important work needs to be done. And, and I, sometimes I, I just don't understand why people don't hear our best intentions, maybe because they don't want to, and maybe people are very cynical, but what I heard my colleagues say today is, "This was good work," but I'll say it, more important work lies ahead. The devil is in the details out there as we try to implement this, and I, I think that's all people were trying to say, and I think a couple, just a couple speakers misunderstood that. Obviously, by voting yes, we understand the importance of the code of conduct. In my comments, I made a comment about, we don't, we have a history of not implementing, executing the laws. This is a law that we pass, and, and I think someone misinterpreted that. I, I was reflecting on the fact that, for the last few years, we've been more cognizant of our roles as enforcers of the law, and we had not done that in the past, and I know every one of my colleagues here is determined to see to it that the law regarding the code of conduct will be enforced. But I, I do want to say, and it's wonderful to watch Mary, when you throw compliments towards her, how red she turns.
Yes.
But that, that does suggest, as Commissioner Powell indicated, she's very humble, and most of Mary's work is really not done in the public eye, although I, it's nice to see her husband there pushing the bus, and that goes to show you that usually successful efforts are a result of a family affair. So, we, I, I do see Ricardo quite a bit, and I, I do see your daughters, but we do appreciate their work and their support for your work, because it was truly invaluable.
Malik!
Oh, there he is. Are you driving?
Hey!
Are you at a party, or are you driving? Are you at a party, or are you driving? I can't tell, looks like you're driving.
Commissioner Evans!
I, I hope you don't have your hands on the wheel, I hope you're in a taxi.
Look at that smile.
You look like you're having a good time, though, better than we are, look at him.
I think he had one or two.
Yeah, oh my goodness. I have never seen him smile at 9:30 at night at a board meeting like that. That's a first. So, how you doing? Can you hear us?
I hope I just voted, I missed it, I was going to give you a moment there.
I, I think we said you would have voted for the Code of Conduct, is that what you said?
Yeah.
It never seems to go quite right, but I know they're working on it. Alright, Malik, well, we're gonna keep on doing our business here, you enjoy yourself, and have a drink on us, please.
Two sheets, man. That cool ass smile.
Yeah, for real, he look like, he look like he's in a limousine or something, he is riding his style. Can we just watch this for the rest of the meeting?
Mustache, let's see her.
This is fun. We're living vicariously through you, Malik, this is great. Alright, well, listen, let me, let me finish my report. And a more serious note, as you all know, the superintendent search went from superintendent search to superintendent selection. We promise you, we will keep you informed as that particular matter progresses. I should tell you that Commissioner Elliott and I, Commissioner Powell and I, we're in Washington DC over the weekend, and we went to the Equity Symposium and the Advocacy Institute. Commissioner Powell's a wonderful person to have around because she's, she really knows her facts, and when we're sitting in a congressperson's office or listening to Senator Schumer, she really is, and I mean this as a sincere compliment, I felt like I was just in the passenger seat riding along, because she, when you go to these lobbying efforts, which I do not like, you only have this amount of time, and you gotta have your act together. And Commissioner Powell knew her facts, knew what was on the agenda, and communicated effectively. So, thank you for going to the Hill with me and the rest of the New York State School Board Association delegation. You all saw the Teaching Learning Institute, Commissioner Hallmark and I attended their 20th anniversary, it was a great celebration. Oh, Mary, Mary, you there? I'm sorry, Mary was there as well. It was a great celebration. The De La Hantes are another set of folks that are quite humble, but have really been working in the Vineyard for many years. And that, when I sat there and watched the presentation, the concept of paying it forward occurred to me, because these people are creating teachers and principals that, that encourage other people to teach. So, it's an incredible gem we have, and I hope we continue to appreciate it and help that effort grow. I know they're appreciative of our effort as a board to support them, and I'm determined that we will continue to show that support. I went to a Great Schools For All event at Third Presbyterian Church. For those of you who are not familiar with that particular effort, is an attempt to break down the concentration of poverty in our community, particularly in our schools. They have a number of ideas, they call those ideas breakthrough or magnet schools. I think you'll be hearing much more about that. I was very honored, along with Deputy Superintendent Adele, to present to that, that group of folks, and the response we got was very encouraging. I met this week, last week, with President Seligman and Regent Wade Norwood about our effort at East High School. I know Dr. Nelms will back me up on this, they are still very, very supportive of it. President Seligman actually reiterated his, his interest in what we're doing there at his recent address that he held at the university, but he communicated to me personally, he is still very encouraged by this, and he repeated the phrase that they repeated over a year ago, they're still all in. And they want to expand the effort to ensure that there's a pipeline, if you will, to that wonderful school that they are building together with the City School District. So, the good news is, we have leaders in this community that understand that we have to do this together, because none of us alone can accomplish that. And in that regard, I, I gotta tell you, we have a Commissioner of Education who regularly contacts me and others about what we're doing. She's been to schools, I don't, to, and gotten mad at things that are or are not happening. She calls me up, sends me texts, because she wants this district to improve, and I think we should actually be encouraged by that. I want to conclude by saying a couple things. Thanks to Mike and Linda, I know Mike Smith, I saw you around, oh, there he is, always in the back, but always out front. He, he was one of the people who helped us, correct me wrong, Linda, making sure this FMP stuff got through. It's not a, it's not an easy job, and it involves understanding the facilities and also understanding, have an appreciation of the politics of it all. So, Mike, we appreciate, and of course, my, and Chip, Chip, Chip obviously is the guy who communicates and writes those letters. Somebody asked me the other day, who wrote that nice letter that had the board? I would, wanted to say I did, but, or that Vice President Elliott did, had all our signatures on it, but, and I, I really didn't know, but I concluded it was Chip, and certainly had a hand in it, and I know Mike was working hand in hand. So, Chip, we do appreciate that work that you've done, and Mike, again, I, I know this was not an easy thing, and, and let's give the staff that worked on it a round of applause, because it passed tonight, and that's, that's great news. I'm almost done, I wanted to, on the good news, you know, I always try to end with good news, I wanted to congratulate Adele Bovard, I don't think it's a secret. You apparently got a new job, I'm kinda mad, but, you know, everybody's gotta do what they gotta do, but let's give Adele a round of applause. She came into this district trying to make a difference, and Adele, I told you the other night, I think you did, and that's no small task for anybody in this work, so thank you. And the, the final bit of, or two bit of good news, Family Fair in the Park, I went to that. The good news is, ladies and gentlemen, I was pitted against another man about my age to do an old-school dance-off, and I won. I won. So, I want to thank the folks that put that event on. Over 3,000 people attended that. It was, it was a beautiful day. Strategically, Jerome and Ricky Fraser decided, I think, to move it back a little bit into the calendar. The weather cooperated. If you did have a chance to go this year, I know they're gonna do it again next year, and it'll probably be bigger and better. 3,400 parents and family members, and they used the opportunity to do surveys, give people information, so we were very, very blessed to have that. In conclusion, I gotta tell you, with our new superintendent, without our new superintendent, even with our interim superintendent, we are going to continue to rebrand this district. And it may not always be with the same people, but I think the mission, our mission is clear. And for those of you that are obviously still gonna be around, when Linda leaves, or when Adele leaves, we're still gonna be the same district, and we're gonna be the same district because of you. So, I wanted to conclude our remarks by saying to everybody, thank you for hanging in there, this is a tough job, and only the blessed and courageous people can do it, and you are those people, so thank you. So, now, you can applaud yourselves for that, absolutely, that's right, that's right. Okay, now, we're moving on to consideration of resolutions. We'll begin with a, a motion to discuss resolutions 775 to 787. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Been moved by Commissioner Powell, seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Hallmark, any comments or discussions regarding those resolutions?
Yes, 783, what are the, what are interpreting services used for?
Board meetings, CSEs. CSE meetings.
Dr. Nelms?
I think it's for, for CSEs or events, translating documents, also, also serves for Spanish, Nepali, and often ASL, Semitic language.
Okay, and how much was that for? I couldn't remember.
It's $15,000.
Oh, $15,000, okay. Alright, thank you.
Yep, any questions or comments regarding those Educational Partnership Organization resolutions? There being no more questions or comments, all those in favor, Resolution 775 through 77, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Adams? Alright.
Alright.
Where are you now? You just, where are you now?
Trump Towers.
Trump Towers, what'd you say? Where are you?
It would be bad to be the right president of the United States.
I, I really, I have never seen him this happy, this late at night. Very good, okay, so you voted yesterday, okay, I need a resolution to discuss, a, a motion to discuss Resolution 788, it's been moved by Commissioner Cruz. 788?
Isn't that?
Oh, it's 10 years, no, we gotta go in the executive session on that one. Thank you, Commissioner Adams. I need a, a motion to discuss Resolution 789, 809, it's been moved by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Any, alright, there you go, alright. Mr. Vice President? Okay, any questions or comments regarding Human Capital Initiative?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Vice President. Resolution 796, how does a personnel clerk make as much money as a coordinator for occupational and physical therapy?
Is that a rhetorical question?
Make 54, each one make $54,000, so, so.
Anybody?
I'm hoping that for a personnel clerk, that's a typo.
Eric, can you answer that?
It is the, the amount that it's within the bracket, it is a person that's coming from another district as well, so they are, it's well within our bracket as far as the salary range.
For a personnel clerk?
Yes, it is.
Let me know what she does.
Basically, what she, she will be doing is she's working in civil service, with the complexity of the civil service process, she'll be processing and doing various different projects that relate to civil service.
And so, why don't we pay a coordinator, which seems to me to be in a administrative level position, more money, or pay the personnel clerk less money?
Again, based upon the experience and the education of the individual, that's the range.
Alright, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions regarding Resolution 789 through 809? There being no further questions or comments, all those in favor, Resolution 789 to 809, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Yeah, no on 796.
Commissioner Evans, can you hear us?
Aye.
Okay, gotcha. Can I get a motion to discuss Resolutions 810 to 814?
So moved.
Been moved by Commissioner Powell, seconded by Commissioner Adams, oh, Commissioner Evans. Any questions or comments regarding those additional pay resolutions?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution 811, the, the language there is what I have an issue with. The board authorizes the administration to make changes in the names of those providing services if necessary. So, I'm always concerned about when there are resolutions like that, because it, it, in my opinion, it opens up a, a area for there to be some misappropriations. So, I guess the question becomes, why can't we put, why do we need to have that language there? Why can't we come back to the table if there are, in fact, different people who may be employed in this, in this area? I, I, I won't vote for that, that one, although I don't, I don't particularly vote for additional pay raises anyway, but I, I'm always, I'm gonna always put this kind of language on the table, because the, in my opinion, it doesn't provide the board with oversight when you have language like this, that you can change the names beyond the scope of this, the authority of this, this body. Now, I can make a motion to, I can make a motion to amend it, that we do not amend, that, that, I can make a motion for an amendment.
Is there someone that can respond to Vice President Elliott's comment?
It's on page, it's on page 32, page 32. 32, page 32.
Good evening, everybody. The reason that that is in there is, there is a lot of fluidity, the names go in early, oftentimes without knowing who in fact is going to be available, and then it's, it's all resolved later on so that payroll goes through a process to ensure that the people that actually perform the work are paid. And we, in fact, had an arbitration on this, where somebody had a name in there, they never performed the work, but claimed that simply because the name was on a resolution, that they should get paid even though they never did the work. And we said, no, the language at the front of it was to ensure that, because, you know, people get sick, people aren't available, people have all sorts of reasons, that when the work actually becomes available to be done, they may not be able to do it, so that the substitution process goes in, and then they, at the, at the back end, payroll does a, goes through a process to ensure that the people that actually did the work are the ones that get paid.
I'm, I'm still uncomfortable with that process.
I understand.
I'm uncomfortable with that, okay.
Any other, go ahead.
One other, Mr. President. Resolution 810, the dates of that person working was September 21st, 2015, through March 1st, 2016, and we're just getting a resolution. So, this mean that this person has already been paid, or are these the wrong dates? This is Resolution 810 on page 27.
They finished in, in March, early March?
Yeah, but this is June, and we should have gotten this back in August.
Good evening.
Good evening. We submitted an amendment, or an exception, because it was discovered at this particular school that the school secretary does not submit that work, and so the recess coach discovered that this teacher had not been paid, so unfortunately, it was not turned in. I can tell you that I did make a phone call to the school, and I don't expect that to happen again.
Okay, things like this, we should, there should be some kind of notation to let us know what's going on?
That wasn't accepted, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Vice President Elliott, I mean, if people weren't on their toes before you got here, they certainly are on their toes now. These are important questions, absolutely.
It's, it's a matter of checks and balances.
Absolutely, so we, we do appreciate that work, and I know the staff appreciate your diligence.
No, they don't.
Yes, they do, yes, they do, yes, they do.
No, they don't.
Okay, any further questions or comments regarding Resolutions 810, 814? It's been moved by Commissioner Cruz, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Vice President Elliott, did you?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I oppose all of those, 810 through 814.
Yep. Commissioner Evans? Let's move on, can I get a motion to discuss Commissioner Cruz, this is budget stuff, Resolutions 815, it's been moved and seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any questions or comments regarding that resolution? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor, Resolutions 815, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Ayes have it. Motion to discuss Resolutions 816 to 821 to Careman Supply, been moved by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by Vice President Elliott. Any questions or comments regarding those resolutions? There being no further questions or comments, all those in favor, Resolutions 816 to 821, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Can I get a motion to dis, Madam Clerk, you recorded that as unanimous vote, can I get a, a, a motion to discuss Resolutions 822 to 835? Been moved by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by Vice President Elliott. Any questions or comments regarding Educational Facilities Resolutions? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor, Resolutions 822 to 835, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Ayes have it. Madam Clerk, now I need a motion to discuss Resolutions 836, and moved by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by Vice President Elliott. These are Information and Management Resolutions. Any questions or comments regarding that resolution? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor, Resolution 836, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Commissioner Evans. Finally, can I get a motion to discuss Resolutions 837 to 864, it's been moved by Vice President Elliott, seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner, Commissioner Evans. I, yeah, I wanna go where you are, man. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 837 to 864? You wanna just make a comment just to make us all laugh again?
No, no, I just, happy, happy, bro.
Okay, alright, you're right, that's a good reason to be happy. Any questions or comments regarding eight, Resolutions 837 to 864?
Commissioner what?
There being no, I'm sorry?
I just want to catch this before you close out the business, I have to, I have to ask for a resolution. I have to, I have to ask for a resolution from the floor when we finish this last bit.
Okay.
And you'll understand why.
Okay. Commissioner Adams?
I just, I want to raise for 858, which is amend the SEG. There was a last-minute change removing Executive Directors to Equity and Placement from, we're on this, right?
Yes, we are.
It's Resolution 858.
858.
amend SEG. I just want to say that, I mean, we always have the ability to revisit that and examine it and change it at a later date. And I just want to say that I'm not comfortable with the lack of thought process and discussion around it. We don't have to do it now, but I'm just putting that on the record, that I might have an interest in arguing for it to stay in the SEG. But we don't.
Just for clarity's sake, which position are you talking about, Mary?
So I think it was just today that the Executive Director of Student Equity and Placement was pulled from being a title in the SEG. Can you imagine I'm arguing for something to be added, possibly added or not subtracted from the appendix A? But that's, I just want a more thorough thought process about that.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, and we are going to address that. It's not only the Executive Director title that may not be appropriate for SEG, but the whole notion of what we, how we do want to title that position moving forward, because we will be filling that position. So we do need to have a larger conversation around that. And that's why we delayed it.
Okay.
To my colleagues, I want to thank Superintendent Simmons and her staff for their work on this. Our Auditor General, Anissa Henry Wheeler, did a lot of work on this. I know a number of people on your team, Chuck Johnson, did a lot of work. Harry did a lot of work on this. The county, Brayton, Civil Service. Bratton? Is it Bratton? Brayden? Brayden? And this was the work that actually was begun by the board quite some time ago. And I want to emphasize, this design of who belongs in, for example, the superintendent's employee group or his cabinet, or her cabinet, is a reflection of the considered thought and opinion and experiences of a number of people. And again, I've referenced them. So thank you for your good work. I think this will be a good way for the new superintendent to start. And as Commissioner Adams has suggested, this is a living, breathing document. There may be some names moved around, some positions moved around. So thank you, though, for the good groundwork. Linda, you did do what you promised to do, which is to, on a number of fronts, but to create a superintendency, an opportunity for a superintendent to come in and not have to deal with a lot of stuff. So we appreciate that. So we need to vote, though, on Resolutions 837 to 864. All those in favor of those resolutions, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Commissioner Powell, you had?
Thank you. This resolution is going to be absolutely self-explanatory when you hear it. I'd like to seek a Resolution 856A. Whereas the Code of Conduct passed as Policy Number 1400 in Resolution 2015-16856, resolved that Policy 5300 is hereby rescinded. It's language I should have caught when I saw the draft. Whenever we replace or amend a policy, we are automatically rescinding it, but because it's a different policy number, it slipped by me.
Second.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded by Vice President Elliott, moved by Commissioner Powell. Any further discussion or comment regarding 856A? There being no further comment or discussion, all those in favor of Resolutions 856A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Commissioner Evans, how do you vote on 856A?
Aye.
And I didn't ask you about 837 to 864? That's a, yes as well?
I vote aye, I vote.
Okay, thank you. Now we move to unfinished business, there being none, new business. I wanted to, just very briefly, again, recognize Adele Bovard. This would, I don't know, Adele, would this be your last meeting? All right, so, again, you leave knowing you've made a difference. And you're staying in New York State, right? Yep. So we'll continue to share conversations and experiences, so we won't say goodbye, we'll just say thank you. And also, I think it's public now, Chuck Johnson is, this would be your last meeting, Chuck?
At the end of the month, the 28th.
So this is your last meeting?
Last business.
Oh, we'll special, well, we'll give you your goodbyes now while you're on TV. Chuck, 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 Chuck. We, we.
You all didn't say that for the former.
Now, don't get started. See, we try to be positive here. See, come on now. But on a serious note, and a more focused note, let's stay focused.
I hear none of this, but.
Chuck, really, we do appreciate your work, absolutely. You're going to be missed. You are an exceptional public servant, and the board, and I know I say this very confidently, every board member would agree, we always felt like we could rely on your advice. You weren't, unless you.
Good God.
Lori, did you have an issue with?
I don't know.
But no, Chuck, thank you very much. We've said it to you before.
I'd like to give him a standing ovation if that's.
All right, we have to go into executive session. Can I get a motion to go into executive session? Is there any other business that we did not cover before we go into executive session?
Uh-oh.
The drinks are on Malik. Malik is buying. We just got to get to him. All right, for those of you who are gladiators, we will adjourn, come in, open session downstairs on the second floor, and we'll adjourn from down there. And for those of you who are going, good night, and have a nice.
Malik, are you watching the game?
I am.
What's the score? What's the score?
Three minutes late.
Oh, yeah. What, how late in the game is it?
It's first, end of the first quarter of the game.
Okay, all right.
It's 39-24, a little bit ago.
Oh, wow.
That's your bag, I didn't read it.